Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our March 24th Council Conference Agenda. Madam Clerk, would you kindly need the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilwoman Krokoviak?
Just present.
Councilwoman Spango?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Guarino?
Present. Okay. Tonight, we have a presentation on the TNR program, the Release Program. I'd like to ask the representative to come up to the podium, name and address, and thank you for being here tonight, and give us your presentation. Thank you for being here.
No, thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you all about TNVR, or TNVM, or TNR. It's alphabet soup today. My name is Jane Guillaume. I'm the Executive Director at People for Animals. We are the largest spay-neuter provider in the state of New Jersey. We have two clinics, one in Hillside, right down the road from you, and one in Robbinsville that we just opened a couple of years ago. So, I was approached, the reason that I'm here talking to you today is I was approached by a group of West Orange residents that are interested in having you guys look at the possibility of instituting TNR, or TNVM, as I like to call it, in West Orange. TNVM stands for Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate, Maintain. So, and TNR is Trap, Neuter, Return. It's all pretty much the same thing, just different letters that different people call them. Okay? We've already met with Teresa De Nova and Michael Fonzino. I apologize, I'm bad with names. So, we did talk to them for a couple of hours about TNVM also. Okay? Let's get started. I have a packet that I put by Karen's.
I put them over there. I didn't like.
Oh, okay. These are for the council members.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
That's what it's for, the public.
It's a PowerPoint presentation, but I didn't want to try to drag along my projector and all that, and so I figured we'll just do this. I do have copies for the audience also, if you guys are interested in following along, they're up here. So, once everybody has them. So, I'm on Slide 3 at this point. Feral cat numbers in West Orange's approach to control. In order to evaluate what can and/or should be done about cats in West Orange, we need to get a feel for the magnitude of the problem. It's really hard to estimate the number of feral cats that are out there. There are a number of different mathematical models that have been developed by researchers to try to estimate the number based on the population. So, we've used the most conservative number, and based on your population, we estimate that you have at least 3,000 feral cats in West Orange. That's quite a lot of cats. In an attempt to control the populations, right now, what's happening is the Department of Health is responding to complaints about violations to the feeding ban, or complaints about cats in general. They issue fines to residents for feeding cats, and some cats are trapped and removed. Removal means that the cats are trapped, either removed and adopted, which is not the usual outcome for feral cats, because they're not mostly adoptable. They usually get euthanized, killed. We call it euthanized to make ourselves feel better, but that's basically what's happening. Other municipalities have used the same approaches of feeding bans and trap and remove unsuccessfully. So, you're not the only ones having this problem. It's a nationwide problem, and certainly throughout all of the townships in New Jersey. So, the next slide shows you a data of the West Orange data about cats in general, and these were taken from reports that were submitted by the Alex Caprio, am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay. Animal Control Facility to the state of New Jersey. I only have 2011 through 2013, but these are the actual numbers that were submitted for West Orange. You can see 349 cats were removed, either through adoption or through euthanasia, from 2011 to 2013. That's not a lot of cats when you're talking about 3,000 that are out there. Next slide has to do with the complaints, and the complaint data I took from the introduction to the feeding ban ordinance that was introduced and passed back in September of last year. So, these are, I assume, based on information that Teresa De Nova provided you. So, on average, you have 108 complaints per year from 2010 to 2013. For 2014, she had a half-year data, so I just extrapolated that into a full year. So, you can see, you're, you know, the problem's not getting any better. It's probably getting worse. All right? I just want to stop for a second here and let everybody know that even though we're animal lovers, we're on the same side of this issue as many of you. We don't like seeing the cats out there any more than you do. They're not, they don't belong there. They're supposed to be house cats. So, we want them, we want fewer cats on the street, just like you do. Okay? And this TNVM program really does work. Okay? It's important when you're devising a solution to have a clear and correct information about the problem, so you can evaluate what's likely to work and what's not. So, let me clear up a few misconceptions first. I did watch the video from the September council meeting, so I took some of the information that was, that went on there, and put that in this presentation to clear up some misconceptions that I heard. The first one, and most important, is there seems to be a thought that the cats are there because they're being fed. That's not how the cats got there. The cats got there because reproductively intact cats were allowed to roam unsupervised, or they were lost, or they were abandoned. Then they start to reproduce, and then we have a problem. So, that's the source of the problem, not the fact that people are feeding them. Cats were there long before anybody started to feed them. So, there are also more feral cats in highly populated areas like apartment complexes, because there's more people there, and more likelihood that they're going to abandon their animals, especially in apartment-type housing that's a little more transient. Sorry. All right. Or other misconceptions that I heard during that meeting were that the cats will move on if they're not fed. Cats are very territorial, and they will stay in their home area. They will find other ways to feed themselves, either through predation or getting into garbages and dumpsters, and that creates more health problems. The other one is cats will stop reproducing if they're not fed. Cats will continue to reproduce. The amount of food has nothing to do with their reproductive cycle. They will become less healthy and probably have more kitten deaths, because they're not as healthy going into the pregnancy. So, then you're going to have more dead kittens around town, and that's no fun either. The fourth one, and probably, this is the one I come up against most often with people that are not in animal welfare, is the thought that these feral cats can be taken into someone's home as a pet. These are animals that have reverted to a wild state. They're not pets. They're dangerous, you can't handle them without protective gear. Believe me, we know, we deal with a lot of them in our clinics every day. They're not house pets. So, it's really unrealistic to think that people can just take them off the streets into their homes. Very few of these animals are going to be friendly. Most of them are going to be wild, feral, like, you know, a squirrel or a raccoon would be. Okay? So, one second. Other possible solutions. I want to talk about why your feeding ban. While it might be a good idea for wildlife, it's not going to work with cats. People love cats, and people are notoriously noncompliant with feeding bans, and so it's not going to stop them from feeding. They'll just find other ways to do it. They'll do it at night. They'll do it from, you know, throwing food out of the car window, however they think they can do it. You're going to create more problems. Those irresponsible feeding practices are going to actually attract wildlife and create nuisances more than if you had a controlled program that told people how and when they can feed. Okay? Feeders are also less likely to report cats or get them neutered for fear of calling attention to themselves, because they don't want to be fined. Feeding bans don't reduce the number of cats, as we talked about. The reproductive cycle is not dependent on food. Cats still remain and reproduce, eat out of the dumpsters. And Maplewood, was it Councilman Krokoviak? Did you speak to someone from Maplewood? Their feeding ban actually increased the number of cats in their area, because people were still feeding, because they're not compliant, and they were afraid to get help to get them fixed. Okay? The other solution a lot of places use is trap and remove, which West Orange uses somewhat. In order to reduce feral cats through removal, you'd have to remove 75% every year, 75% of 3,000. That's a lot of cats to try to catch and remove. And cats are really good at hiding. When they feel threatened, they will find a place to get that you can't get at them, so there's always going to be more cats out there to reproduce. Let's talk a little bit about how prolific cats are. They reach sexual maturity between four and five months of age, sometimes six, but they can reproduce as early as four months of age. They generally have two to three litters per year, and each litter has four to six kittens, on average, in the litter. So, if we have one pair, if we start with one pair of cats in two litters, let's just assume it's only two, that pair is going to produce eight kittens. Let's assume half those kittens are female. They're going to have a litter, probably the same year. So, now we've got four more from each of those females. So, that's 24 cats in one year from one pair of cats. This problem can get away from you very quickly, and getting them fixed will help stop that in its tracks. And then we can talk about how we reduce the number. Okay? You also only have a capacity of 27 cats at your facility, so it would be impossible, really, to trap and remove all of these cats. So, trap, neuter, vaccinate, manage, that's what we're here to talk about today. The solution we're proposing is a method by which cats are humanely trapped, neutered, vaccinated, and returned to their outdoor home, where they're then monitored and managed by a caretaker, who's a volunteer. The caretaker is trained, and we'll get into that later. Comprehensive TNVM program sanctioned and supported by the township is a very effective, humane, and publicly accepted way to reduce feral cat populations. The Animal Welfare League of West Orange, I believe, there's a representative here today, and they sent a letter also saying that they're in support of this approach. Okay? So, crafting an ordinance to fit West Orange, let's talk about a couple of things that should absolutely be in your ordinance if you decide to go that way. You need to prohibit abandonment and roaming of reproductively intact pets off the owner's property. This addresses the cause of the problem. So, then if you have someone who has a reproductively cat, a reproductively intact cat that's off its property, you can then find them and encourage them to get that animal fixed, if they're going to let it roam. The second thing is require anyone who feeds cats to get them fixed and vaccinated. This will immediately reduce the number of potential rabies vector cats in the city, because they'll be vaccinated, and they'll also lower the potential for human exposure, because fewer people will be exposed to potentially infected cats. You should establish acceptable feeding practices and penalties for noncompliance. So, this would be a feeding ban. Basically, if you're not participating in the TNVM program, you cannot feed cats, and you would have penalties for that also. But establishing the feeding practices, you can decide what's acceptable, what's not, where they can do it, when they can do it, how much they can do, how long can they leave it out, all of those things. It will also increase the knowledge of how many cats are in the township. I'm sorry, I wrote "city," but I realize that you're a township now that makes you big sorpresa. It's hard to keep track. All right? So, you'll know, you'll know better how many cats are in the township, and you can track rabies compliance through a program like this. It also improves the health officer's ability to protect residents, because you'll know where the cats are, how many there are, you know, and all of that. More knowledge is always empowering. You should also define and require nuisance abatement for those residents that are not so happy that the cats are there. There needs to be a method to address their concerns as well. In our experience, usually, once the people who are complaining about the cats learn that the cats will be euthanized if they're removed, they're willing to talk about other alternatives and other solutions to their problems. Okay? Benefits of TNVM. There's an immediate reduction in the number of cats that are in the area with TNVM. As you're trapping, you're going to remove any friendly cats, any kittens that can be socialized, so that there's an immediate reduction in the population of that colony. Sooner is better. We're coming up on kitten season. Caretakers also voluntarily do the work. You have, what, two animal control officers in West Orange?
Yes.
There's no way that they can trap and neuter all of these cats, whether it's to get them neutered or to remove them, it's just too much work for them. The beauty of TNVM is that you enlist the people who, the stakeholders, the people who care about the cats, to help you get this work done. And they care about the cats enough that they're going to do it, they do it voluntarily, and they're going to continue until they get every single cat in their colony done, because they want every single cat to be cared for. So, you know, use that to your advantage. They're often willing to contribute to costs as well. We're going to talk more about costs also. This means there's no added work for your Department of Health, or your ACOs, and it may actually reduce the work that they have to do, because they won't need to be trapping as much. Somebody else is going to be out there to do that. Caretakers will voluntarily comply with feeding restrictions. If you let them know when and where they can feed, and that they're allowed to, they'll do it the way you want them to. If they don't, you have your penalties. They also monitor cat health, and will identify potentially infected or rabid cats more quickly than they would be otherwise, because if nobody's watching them, we don't know which ones are sick. Lost pet cats are more likely to be found, since caretakers monitor colonies for newcomers also. So, you know, all of your residents who may have a cat that shot out the door, they may be more likely to find that cat in a program like this. There'll be less potential exposure to rabies from cats in the township, since more feral cats will be vaccinated. That's key. From a public health standpoint, rabies is the reason, pretty much, that we do any animal control. So, you know, this program helps to reduce the number of potential exposures to humans, because the cats are then vaccinated. Right now, they're not vaccinated. The biggest benefit, I think, is nuisance complaints are reduced significantly. A lot of the nuisance behaviors and things that people complain about have to do with mating and hormones. So, once you remove the hormones and the urge to mate, a lot of those things just go away, and nuisance complaints reduce on their own. The smell, everybody has smelled that smell. All male cats have strong ear and odor, and they spray to mark their territory. They also leave their feces unburied, as a method of marking their territory also. Mostly, most of the time, cats will bury their feces. That's their normal behavior. But with male cats, they leave them unburied as a territorial marker. So, if you remove the hormones, you remove that behavior also. Males, when it comes to noise, males fight with each other over females, you hear the screaming. Females will yowl when they're in heat, and catterwalling is actually associated with the mating act itself, which is very painful for cats, and that's why they scream. Male cats will also roam less, so they're more likely to stay in their home territory. If you make one neighborhood yard more comfortable for them, they're more likely to hang out there. We can't obviously control their movements all the time, because they're, they're going to go where they're going to go. But if you make it more comfortable in one area, they're more likely to consider that home and hang out there all the time. So, that means less, you know, less bothering the other neighbors. Females won't need to find protected places to litter, either under your sheds and in your garages and things like that. Animal Control Facility will not have to respond to feral cat complaints in a TNVM program. In addition, fewer kittens will enter the facility every spring and summer, allowing you better use of your animal control resources. There's, there's a few different ways that a TNVM program can be set up. I recommend a sponsor-based approach, because this is the least administratively burdensome to your Department of Health. There are volunteers, and you have the Animal Welfare League in West Orange, and, you know, setting up a committee of interested stakeholders maybe would be a good place to start, to find a sponsor to work with your program. I know that there are a lot of volunteers and a lot of people in West Orange that would be interested in that, and this tends to grow on itself. Once you help one person, that person is likely to help the next one in line, and it kind of pays itself forward. Okay? So, the sponsor is usually a nonprofit organization. It doesn't have to be. It can be any, any way you want to set it up. Nonprofit organizations have some benefits when it comes to Oprah and that kind of thing. So, if your committee is willing to pursue nonprofit status, that would probably be the best way to go. So, the sponsor basically approves and manages the caretakers. They provide outreach training and help with trapping. They maintain records and tracking data on vaccines and whatever else you're interested in. Usually, it's number of colonies, number of cats in each colony, how many were TNR'd, how many were removed, and they will make sure that the caretakers update the vaccines when they're due, those kinds of things. They are the ones that will respond to complaints and assist with nuisance abatement. You can require, if you want to, that they report their interventions to the Department of Health. You can involve them, not involve them, however you want to set it up, whatever works for your town. They perform fundraising and grant-seeking to support the program, because that's what everybody wants to know, who's going to pay for it. Right? So, it doesn't have to come out of taxpayer money. There are a lot of grant foundations out there that are interested in supporting this kind of thing, so there's opportunities, including Sustainable Jersey, which I believe you guys participate in, so. And the sponsor works with the health officer to promote responsible pet ownership and prevent abandonment, again, getting to the source of the problem. Okay? A sponsor-based ordinance saves the city administrative work and gives the health officer another resource for feral cat issues and better control over feeding. It can be funded, like I said, through grants, donations. Some townships have used a donation blank on their licensing form, if they, you know, to encourage people with pets to donate to the TNVM program. You can take your cat licensing fees and put it towards that. Makes perfect logical sense to me to have, you know, cat owners paying for the cat problems. I'm a cat owner myself, so don't take offense. All right? All records are held by the sponsor, so you don't have the maintenance of records, and it prevents Oprah issues related to colony locations. We don't want the people, we don't want people to be able to discover colony locations easily, because we don't want people to dump their cats at those locations. And we don't want people who might not want the cats there to be going out and doing harm to those cats. So, it's important to keep the locations of the colonies as close to the chest as possible and not make that public. So, the feeding ordinance would also create a feeding ban that applies to cats with which, despite your feeding ban that you put in place in September, does not apply to cats, because it's a wildlife feeding ban. And under the state of New Jersey, under New Jersey law, cats are a domestic species and not a wildlife species, so that can't really be applied to cats. But if you did an ordinance like this, you would then have a cat-appropriate feeding ban that you could use. Basically, it's, it's a carrot-and-stick approach. You offer protection for the people that are caring for the animals, if they get them neutered and vaccinated, or they're fined if they don't. Okay? The next page shows some results of some towns that have had TNVM in place for a number of years, and you can see the reduction in the number of cats that are out on the street is pretty staggering. You know, how would it be five years from now to be able to say you have 80% less cats in West Orange? And that's pretty typical. There are over, I think it's over 150 towns in New Jersey now that do some form of TNR, TNVM, TNVR. So, it's gaining ground, and it's proving useful. When you're assessing how any proposed system is likely to work, it's important to compare the new system to the one you're using now. You have to ask yourself, is what we're doing now working? And I think we established with the data in the beginning that it's really not, and I think even Teresa De Nova would agree with that. We still have a significant problem, and she needs some tools, just like you said. She needs some tools to be able to combat the problem, and we believe that TNVM is the right tool for the job. Also, remember, if, if the cats are not sterilized or removed, there's still going to be as many cats as there have been, and they're going to be reproducing and unvaccinated. So, as you've probably experienced already, removing them is likely to cause a public outcry also. So, you know, there's a lot of people out there with big hearts for animals. So, expecting a quicker, easier solution to the problem is not realistic either, and expecting there to be no cats is not realistic either. They're there, they're going to be there. We can try to keep them to a minimum and keep their nuisances to a minimum as well. But that's really the best that we can hope for. It didn't appear overnight, and it's not going to be solved overnight. So, we need to give it some time, and we need to have people understand that this is a process that takes some time to resolve. It doesn't take a lot of time, but it does take some time. We can, in the meantime, learn to live peacefully in the presence of cats, just like we tolerate the wildlife that are in our backyards, squirrels, raccoons, skunks, things like that. We don't try to round them up just because they walked across the lawn. You know, if they're a nuisance, if they're causing damage or something like that, that's a different story. But just to have a cat walk across your lawn is really not a nuisance. If they're pooping there.
Can you get a microphone, please?
I'm sorry, I have a very low voice, too.
Can I have your phone?
Okay. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry. So, I just believe that cats should be given the same consideration that we give wildlife. They're not out there because they want to be. They're there because some irresponsible people made some bad decisions, and this is what the result is. Okay? So, my last, in closing, talk about government that's responsive to public opinion. TNVM provides an opportunity for you to work collaboratively with the constituents in West Orange, rather than, you know, rather than, you know, having a mallet over their head, or however you want to put it. Encouraging them to participate in a humane solution that the majority supports, but that recognizes and addresses the interests of the people on the other side of the issue is very important. Isn't this a better approach than enacting an ineffective punitive legislation in an effort to control constituents' behavior? Isn't this the kind of government that you want to give and that they deserve? We know that council wants to give Ms. De Nova the tools she needs, and we think that TNVM is the right tool for the job. Before I close, I just want to ask everyone in the audience who is supportive of this kind of approach to stand up, just to give you an idea of how much support this approach has.
Thank you.
Obviously, we have some that are not West Orange residents, but most of the people here are West Orange residents. Okay? Do you have any questions?
Well, first of all, Jane, I want to thank you for your presentation this evening. I wanted to give you your opportunity to approach the council and to make your observations known. I must say that your presentation is a lot more put together, a lot more informative than the first one that was done. There's a lot more information, it's very basic, it's very general, and it hits the point. But I have to say, it's a very complex, very
It is.
You know, issue, and it's an issue that we have to take in the information, and you've given us additional information. Also, I have to apologize for Ms. De Nova not being here tonight, she had a personal situation. She wanted to be here, but she sends her apologies, and she'll be forwarding information to council members as well. You know, we look at it as a whole town. We look at this issue as that we're not animal haters, none of us are.
Right.
You know, I have pets, you know, and they're very important. But we have, we have to look at both sides of the issue.
Absolutely.
People that are for and people that are against. It's the only fair to think. That's why I felt it was our responsibility to have you come tonight and to give you the open forum, to give us the information, and I do thank you. It's a very good presentation. You gave us information that we didn't have
I'm happy to help in any way that I can.
And we will. Don't, don't say that to me, because
Well, I put my card, you have my card on
We do.
Each of your packets, my cellphone is on there. Please don't hesitate.
No, thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
This is, the information you have given us tonight is much appreciated. There's information that we're pulling from other areas, too, because we want to look at the total picture. at the total picture.
Sure.
At the end of the day, though, we want to have a program in place that basically gives everybody some sense of accomplishment, some sense of feeling good, of protecting your interests and, and looking out for yourself. So I thank you for being here. I thank those in the audience for being here tonight. I'm, I'll open the floor to my council colleagues in a minute. Councilman Cervelo, do you have any comments?
I, I do have a question, not, not a comment, Council President.
Sure.
And thank you again for agreeing to, to have this presentation today. I've, I've been looking forward to understanding this issue a little bit better. Excuse me, I'm a little bit under the weather as well. My question is pertaining to the, the different municipalities that were listed. Any of these municipalities compare in terms of either cat population or, or number of households in order for us to, you know, to do it?
We'd have to do more research on that. I can get, I did, I did give Ms. De Nova a complete listing of all the townships and municipalities in New Jersey that have TNR programs of some sort.
So why did we list only, only these four? Is it because the numbers are-
They're the, the ones that, no, not necessarily. Some programs don't have the data collection. It's more of a loose, you know, not as regulated program. So these are the ones that are, I think, are the best put-together programs. In, in New Jersey, some of the best. So I, I trust this data more than I might trust other.
Yeah, because we're looking at, we're looking at a cat pop, population according to the statistics of around 3,000. It's around 20% of the local population. And 75% needs to be addressed in order for the population, in order to cut back on the population.
If you're not, if you're going to do nothing else but trap and remove them, you have to remove 75% of the population every year? Or, you know, we went through how prolific cats are. They'll just replace it with reproduction.
What I'm going with this is just trying to have a good, a municipality that would be a good comparison for us to assess expenses associated with the program. So I'm, I'm just looking to see if, you know, if it's a comparable, two or three comparable municipalities where we could take a look at-
I can, I can get you that list that I gave to, to Ms. De Nova. Sure.
His data will help us.
Sure, sure. Honestly, most of the, most of the other municipalities do not contribute. It, it falls, the, the, the funding falls to the caretaker and the sponsor. So many of them don't use taxpayer dollars at all. Some use cat licensing fees. We just had a, a TNR ordinance passed in Hillside, which is where my clinic, one of my clinics is located, and they're putting the cat licensing fees towards it. I like it because then I'm motivated as a sponsor to help improve their licensing compliance because it benefits my program.
Sure. Do you know if it's 100% of the cat licensing fee?
It's 100% of the cat licensing fees.
100%?
Yep.
Great. And also, as it relates to the nonprofit entities that assist in developing a, a local program, in addition to, you mentioned grants, possibly donations, and I guess licensee fees as some forms of, of funding, some funding resources.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, if-
A nonprofit, actually even a municipality, depending on the program, can qualify for grants under a lot of these programs, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you, if you can share with us, you know, a, a good comparable, I would love to assess.
Sure.
What is our, our fee for a cat registration a year per household? Do you know how much we charge? Okay, I'll look more into it. Appreciate it. Thank you. This is, this is very informative.
Thank you. Happy to. Any other questions?
Yes, thank you. Very impressive, very informative presentation. Thank you very much. Could you go a little bit more into your background? You sound very authoritative, but I think it would be-
My background? My personal background?
Your professional background. No, no.
Well, I've been-
How long you been doing it?
I've been with people for, I'm formerly, formerly a nurse, a human nurse. In a, you know, before my kids were old, you know, when my kids were young, I stayed home with them. But before my kids were born, I was a nurse in, you know, in hospital care. Then I stayed home with my children and when I was going to get back into the workforce, I found I was uncomfortable because so much had changed in that time. But I still wanted to use my medical knowledge and I landed in veterinary medicine. Apparently, I have an aptitude for it. So I worked my way up through PFA and, and now I'm the executive director. I joined them in 2007. So before that, I didn't have any experience with animal welfare issues except for my own cats in my home. So I've learned all of this on my own. I've gone to a lot of conferences across the country and educated myself and, there's a lot of good information out there about these, these kinds of programs and their success. There's a lot of good scientific data also.
Okay, thank you. Could you talk a little bit more about resourcing? What are the resources that are needed? What do they go for? How we might estimate-
The cost.
What, what, not just cost, but also number of volunteers, number of hours, that sort of thing?
That depends on how, how, how energetic your volunteers are. Usually, it's, like in Hillside, I don't, I don't know how Hillside compares. I think we're probably about a third or a quarter the size of West Orange and Hillside. And we have one employee of mine that helps two volunteers to manage the whole program.
And then, when, when you say just two volunteers, do you mean for the entire town? Do you mean the, the?
Mm-hmm. Like I was saying before, you get a couple of core volunteers. You get one person who really knows what they're doing, who has experience doing TNR before. And there are those in, in West Orange. I know them from them being clients at my clinic. You get a couple of core, very knowledgeable people. They will work with the first few. And then, like I said before, it tends to pay itself forward. You know, one person will get help and then they're grateful, so they'll help the next one to do the trapping. It's intimidating to trap the first time cat. You know, feral cats can be scary. So having somebody who's experienced to get your, get you started is usually all you need. And once you realize how, how easy it is, it's really not that hard. You have challenges on cats that just won't go into the trap, but there's ways to deal with that. It's only a couple of volunteers. It really doesn't take that much. What you need is somebody to take responsibility for the data collection and following the records and maintaining all the records. So you need one person who is willing to do that. And in Hillside, it's PFA. Here, maybe it could be the Animal League or a group of, of citizens, like the group that approached me to come talk to you guys.
So you have two volunteers. What's, how many man-hours, say, a week or a month?
It's a pretty new program in Hillside. It was just approved in October of last year. I would say she probably, well, my employee probably spends maybe two hours, three hours a week.
Two or three hours a week?
Yeah, yeah.
And then how about the cost for veterinary care?
You can find lower-cost veterinary providers like PFA. There's, there's other ones out there, too. Associated Humane has a low-cost spay unit program. And there's, you know, there's other ones. There's, there's a ton of them. I don't want to name names because I don't want anybody to be left out. But at, at PFA, it's $55 to neuter or spay, male or female, doesn't matter. Vaccinate for rabies and distemper and, and ear tip. On the front of the packet, you can see the left ear of the cat picture is, is cut off in a straight line. That's the universal indicator that an animal has, that a cat has been fixed and vaccinated. Makes it easier for animal control if they, you know, if they trap a cat to know this animal is already fixed and vaccinated, they just let it out. It's something you can see at a distance because, as I said before, you can't get close enough to a feral cat to look and see if there's a scar on the belly or if the testicles are still there. So the ear lets us look at a distance and see.
Okay. You said during your presentation that this program would have, put no additional burden on a town's health officers.
It, it should actually help your health officer because she'll have another resource to call when she gets an animal, when she gets a complaint about feral cats. She calls up the sponsor and says, you know, "Go check it out." Sponsor goes out and talks to the people. She doesn't have to send an animal control officer, nobody from the health department has to go. And then you can require the sponsor to report back to Teresa, you know, what, what was done, what was the resolution.
Okay. The council president mentioned that there is potentially, or sometimes opposition to these programs. Could you talk a little bit about why people are opposed and how, how that sort of issue is dealt with?
People don't like to have, yeah, people don't like to have, you know, the cats aren't supposed to be there. So as a homeowner, they're like, you know, "This isn't my cat, I don't want it in my yard." But what they're not realizing is that it's nobody's cat. Nobody put that cat there. And it's not the feeder's responsibility either. They're just, you know, trying to do something good out of the goodness of their heart. They're compelled to help this poor creature, you know, so taking it out on them is, is not fair either. It's, it's a misconception. It's like blaming your neighbor because there's a skunk in the yard. It's the same thing. The cats are there because they're there because something else, you know, someone else was irresponsible with their pet and that led to the reproduction. And now they can't be touched or, you know, they're not social. So I, in my opinion, it's, it's a misunderstanding about the plight of the cats. I don't, you know, I don't think that people understand that they're, you know, well, we don't want them there. We don't like that they're there. It breaks my heart every time I see a feral cat, but what am I going to do? I think that life has value and I'm not going to kill it just because it exists.
So, so pardon my potential misunderstanding. It would seem to me that people would support this program because it's proven to reduce the cat population. Are you saying people don't want to, the opposition comes from people who don't want to wait, they just want an animal control officer to come and take the cat away no matter what? Okay. But that's-
Primarily, that's, that's what we, that's what we deal with, is people don't want to deal with the cats in their yard. They shouldn't be there. That's the only argument that they have and they want immediate results. And unfortunately, there is no immediate solution. Even, even if you take them away, there's something called the vacuum effect. If you take cats out of an area that has resources, food, water, shelter, other cats are going to move in and set up shop there. So, you know, even removing them is a temporary solution.
And I would, I would guess that the potential, the long-term potential is to reduce the population. But that wouldn't necessarily mean that you didn't have that cat or another cat coming into your yard.
Right, right.
So in other words, somebody might look at this and say, "It might be a great program, but it's not fixing my problem in my yard."
Right, exactly, exactly. But like I said, we can learn to, to live peacefully with the cats, just like we live peacefully with wildlife. If they're destroying your furniture and, you know, digging up your garden beds, that needs to be addressed, absolutely. And that's why you have to have a nuisance abatement plan in any good TNVM program. Because those, those residents have just as much right to enjoy their property the way they want to as does the person who wants to feed the cat. So it has to be equitable. It has to address both sides of the issue.
Thank you. That's all.
Councilwoman Spago?
I would like to thank you because for your presentation, you certainly educated myself and I'm sure my colleagues. This is a work in progress, even though we did pass this ordinance a couple months ago. My concerns would be basically, I think the first thing for West Orange is to find a sponsor.
Yep.
That's the first thing. But it would be issues with enforcement. I mean, we keep referring to People for Animals in Hillside. But in Hillside, correct me if I'm wrong, you have mobile units to pick up the cats, you bring them to your clinic, you're training the caretakers, you're enforcing the rules, you're making them sign agreements, you're providing the spaying and neutering of the cats. So it's an excellent program, but I think it's very specific to Hillside.
I would disagree with that because all of the services that PFA provides with the exclusion of being the actual sponsor and keeping the data for Hillside is our services that we offer to the entire state of New Jersey. So the transport, the trap neuter, the trap loan program, the training sessions, we've done training sessions in Carney. We've done training sessions, did I say that right? Training sessions in Brick Township way down the shore. We've done training sessions, you know, anybody who's interested will go out and we'll do training sessions and we would be happy to do that in West Orange.
But I still think that it has, I mean, I think People for Animals is overseeing everything within the township of Hillside, which is a lot different than coming out of a, going into another municipality. I mean, I think it's great. I just think we would, it's a work in progress. We would need to find a sponsor and someone who's going to oversee all of the things that you're doing in Hillside for this to work here, is what I'm saying.
Absolutely. You would, you definitely need a sponsor. You need someone to coordinate your program because I can't offer that to you.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
But what I, what I can offer is all of the services that I just mentioned, the transport, the trapping, the, you know, that kind of thing. And we would be more than happy to serve as a resource and mentor to guide your, your program and your sponsor as things get up and going.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Jane, thank you. I have to say how much I appreciate the fairness and the balance of this presentation because it is the follow-up that we did it when we voted initially on the feeding ban. My thoughts are not coherent here because I was taking notes as you were speaking, but-
I know the feeling.
A couple of things. No, I just really do appreciate this. About organizing the volunteer group, obviously, we have a population for that.
You have resources, you definitely do.
It does seem like, well, I guess the immediate solution, I'm thinking right now, is our ordinance currently is punitive with the fines. And in your presentation here, pages aren't numbered, but on the well-crafted page-
Okay.
Like, one of the requirements? That it would require anyone who feeds cats to get them fixed and vaccinated.
Yes.
So here, we went the route of fining them, but it seems like an immediate fix would be to amend the ordinance that if you are going to continue feeding these cats, if they're doing it discreetly, then that would, you would be responsible for that as well.
Yeah.
I mean, that just seems immediate until a volunteer group can actually be mobilized and put in place.
I would go a little further.
Okay.
And if you're going to amend your feeding ban, I would spell out when and how and where people can feed.
Well, you can give us that.
Give them specific acceptable practices.
Okay. Well, you can give us that.
Because I know that, I know that Teresa De Nova is struggling with people who are just indiscriminately opening their window and throwing food out and leaving a big tray of food here. And, you know, she said she's even had drive-bys where people, you know, drive by and throw the food out the window of the car. So, you know, all of those things are not, not acceptable and she needs the tools to be able to get that under control right away.
Okay. We did receive numerous emails over the past few months and quite a few of them did provide grant resources. So, you know, at least we have that information. And you mentioned Sustainable Jersey. I am the coordinator for West Orange for Sustainable Jersey. And coincidentally, tomorrow evening at McLune's, there is a county-wide meeting going on. So I certainly can go and ask if anyone has gone the Sustainable Jersey route to look at programming to address this issue.
That's great.
That's one thing. I am curious, though. You mentioned before about keeping a colony discreet in a densely populated township as West Orange. How, how is that possible?
You can't, but you do want to protect the caretakers and the cats from Oprah. Because, you know, like you said, people in the immediate neighborhood are going to know that the cats are there. There's no hiding it. But you want to keep from publicizing those locations because you don't really want people to have access to the cats if they mean to do them harm. You don't want your caretakers to be harassed. And you certainly don't want people dumping their animals at these locations.
And the sponsor-based organization, you talk about creating this core group or volunteer group. There's a whole hierarchy with that, right? There's someone supervising, someone reports back to Oprah.
However you want to do it. There's a lot of different ways you can do it. You can have a, you know, a volunteer group form, a nonprofit organization of their own, and they would be responsible for their own governance.
You'd want to report back to the health officer, but also collect the data that goes back to the township.
Your ordinance is going to require certain things of the sponsor. But you wouldn't be involved in the governance of the organization itself. You could also set up a committee that has, you know, all the stakeholders at the table. You know, the council representative, someone from the Department of Health, someone from the animal control facility, you know, whoever you decide. And then your volunteers that are working with TNR. Just get everybody at the table, you know, to organize your program. You can do it a lot of different ways.
Thank you, thank you. A lot of realistic data in here that we can certainly use. Thank you.
Jane, before we thank you, thank you for coming here with such a tremendous presentation. It's something that will give us more to look and to work with. And we will reach out. We're going to digest this information and we'll reach out to you. Please, anything you send that we've asked for, can you please direct it to our township clerk?
Sure.
And she'll give you the information.
Yeah, I'll get it.
You know, the more information, the best. You know, the one thing you had in your thing is, and I love it, is keeping reality in mind. Is to looking at the program in reality, how it's really going to work, what the results would be. And we can't be over-haventation. And like I said, this is a complicated issue.
It is.
But I felt it was fair to have you come tonight. I felt I wanted to give you the opportunity to address the council. And basically, what you've done is what, you know, you've given us additional information in a more generalized way so we can digest this. And we look forward to cooperate, whatever, to talking more about this. We'll give more information from Ms. De Nova, which I couldn't be here tonight. But we thank you. And, you know, this is what we need. And Councilman Karovac, did you have a question?
Yeah, just very briefly. Ms. De Nova had sent an email, I think, to the entire council with some of her, I guess, issues that she thought were still outstanding. And one of the things she talked about was who supervises the custodians or the...
The sponsor.
Not the sponsor, I thought the email...
Caretaker?
The caretakers, yes.
The sponsor is responsible for overseeing the caretakers. And if the Department of Health gets any complaints about cats or registered colonies, that should be directed to the sponsor. And the sponsor would then have to respond to it. You can put in your ordinance a requirement that the sponsor responds within 48 hours. You know, you have a blank slate here. You can set it up however you want. I'm happy to give any advice, any, you know, if you want to sit down and hash out particulars, I'm more than happy to do that. Animal Protection League of New Jersey, I think some of you may have been in touch with Michelle Lerner already. She's a policy specialist and she is an attorney. And this is her area of expertise, helping municipalities draft TNVM legislation that's going to work for them and address the concerns of your unique township.
Thank you. Jane, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate that you guys gave me the time. And I just want to clarify, I'm not here for myself. I'm representing your residents.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is now, now I ask my council colleagues. Any comments, sir, on this will take place during the public meeting, sir?
This has to do with the cats. I think I could answer a lot of the questions that you had. My name's Len Twist. I'm the administrator for the town of Carney, TNR.
Well, I'm sorry. We have to start, sir, we have to start our council meeting. We're behind schedule.
But, sir, the first thing on the agenda is public comment.
So we'd like to have you come back up for your time and public comment. We're not dischewing you away.
I have a question.
Before, do my council colleagues, we have to move along. Any of my council colleagues have any council liaison presentations? Yes, Councilman Karovac?
Just very briefly, the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission is in discussions with Prism on providing a certificate of appropriateness to the developers. This is for the downtown redevelopment project that meets the concerns of the Historic Preservation Commission and meets the conditions that the commission wanted to put on the certificate of appropriateness, which has to happen. There has to be an approved and accepted certificate of appropriateness for the project to move forward. And they're discussing it now. The 45-day clock that's supposed to run between the time that an application from a redeveloper is presented and a decision from the commission, that's the 45-day window, has been suspended by mutual agreement. And they're discussing ways to meet some of the concerns of the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission. So I'll keep you up on anything else that happens.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any other colleagues? Susan?
Sure. Not to keep everyone waiting, but I do have a few announcements. This Saturday is Earth Hour Global Phenomenon, March 28th, between 8:30 and 9:30. There are billions of people around the world that have pledged to turn their lights out for one hour. That's all we're asking. But it is more than just this one-hour event. It is really a movement that has really achieved environmental impact all around the world. So if you go to earthhour.org, you can find some more information about that. And if you would like to join the Environmental Commission up at the 9/11 Memorial Park, it's really a panoramic view of the city. And when you see 85% of the lights go out in New York City, it's truly an amazing sight. So we invite everyone. And I would also like to thank the Thomas Edison National Historic Park for hosting our kickoff last Thursday. We had quite a number of guest speakers there. And also something else, if you'd like to Google, I see people writing, please Google Leader of Light. This is a million-dollar commitment from Pepsi. The CEO of Leader of Light is a West Orange resident. Young founder is Eliak Diaz. And what he has created is solar light out of recycled Pepsi or any kind of discarded water bottle and creating light in third-world countries, particularly in the Philippines when they were devastated with the typhoon two years ago. Please, just Google Leader of Light. Very interesting. April 2nd, next Thursday, is Recreation Department's Spring Fling at 6:00 PM. It starts at the Katz Field House, K-A-T-Z Katz Field House. $2 for to see the magic show, which starts at 6:00 o'clock, and followed by 7:00 Egg Hunt and Meet the Bunny. So everyone is invited to attend that. The Valley Arts, Luna Stage in Valley Arts, their next performance of Tar Beach starts on April 9th. It runs from April 9th through May 9th. Thursday evenings at 7:30, Friday and Saturday at 8:00, and Sunday matinees at 3:00. Everyone is welcome to attend there, lunastage.org for more information. I do have an announcement from the West Orange Arts Council, but I see the chairman and vice chair here. So I guess at public comment, they can come in and talk about the project and exhibit that is upcoming. For Street Fair?
And the Street Fair, June 6th.
Okay, please save the date. Street Fair, the Edison Day Street Fair, Saturday, June 6th, from 11 through 5, 1 to 3 session of that is for the residents picnic. And 5 to 9, food vendors, beer garden, and concert right at the Edison Museum, National Historic Site. It's free. And I just have to say one of the things that we have there, Mount Pleasant Avenue right here, we have Slide the City. So if you want to Google something that looks like fun, please Google Slide the City and see what we have planned for Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. That's part of it. Also, I'd just like to announce that the Downtown West Orange Alliance is the 2015 recipient of the Accredited Main Street Program, which only 10 nationwide, the Downtown Alliance, West Orange's Downtown Alliance, was awarded and pointed, we met all 10 top standards of creating, developing, and energizing our downtown corridors. So congratulations to the Downtown Alliance. Congratulations to our executive director, Megan Brill, and to our board of trustees. It's a great achievement. And it goes to show you what the work is done and what people across the country see. It's happening in our downtown corridor. And it's a good move forward for West Orange. And also, please, June 6th, the Town Main Street Event, you know, Edison Day. It's a great time to spend downtown, to visit what's downtown, the Edison Laboratories. So we look for your participation. It's going to be a great time. And that's all. We go right to our meeting. Madam Clerk, which can read the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the municipal clerk of the township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Karovia?
Present.
Councilwoman Spango?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Agarino?
Present.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I now open the floor to public comment. Please raise your hand and I'll then, okay. Sir, we cut you short, so we'll call you first. Please speak into the microphone, sir, your name and address?
My name's Len Twist. I'm from, I live on East Millan Avenue in Carney, New Jersey. We enacted the ordinance on November 12th of last year for TNR. It took a matter of just a few weeks for us to drum up people. I put it on Facebook. People come out of the woodwork. I didn't know Mr. Ray until, I believe it was the 1st of August. I got in the summons for feeding feral and stray cats behind my apartment house. And from there, I took it right on to the town council. We succeeded in getting the ordinance changed. We've been very successful. I got the numbers for the first month and a half, actually, as we started on the 12th or 13th. So for the end of November, in the month of December, there was a 50% reduction against the comp years of 12 and 11 and 13, those three years. 50% reduction on cat intake. I haven't gotten numbers coming up. I'll be getting them in the next 10 days or so. I think it's more. I currently have, myself as an administrator, I'm also a trapper. My assistant, Kathy DeRay, she's also a trapper. We have 23 caregivers working under us. We have a committee. Some are fundraisers, some are transporters to the vet. We have a recovery station that a woman was very generous to give us down in South Carney. I understand our geography is just a little different. Our residential section is much smaller than yours. Carney as a whole would bury this town. We're way big. We've got a big industrial area. And it's commonly known as a dumping ground for animals. For years, people, once it becomes that cat that don't chase the little red light, out it goes. The dog that piddles on your floor, out it goes. And it's just, they're congregated all over. Our community is estimated at 5,000 stray or free-roaming or feral cats. I guess I have 23 caregivers, including myself. I'm taking five tomorrow to the vet. The way we have structured it is the Animal Control Officer, which is Bergen County, they fund the vetting of the cat. Comes out to $67 per cat for vaccination, ear tip, and the neutering or spay. The town of Carney pays Bergen County $92,000 a year for their services. That means if a dog gets hit by a car and it needs somebody to pick the carcass up, Bergen County comes out and picks it up. If a cat's making a lot of noise, they come out and catch the cat. Raccoons are knocking over garbage cans, they come out and get the raccoons. That's their job. Well, we've taken away the cat thing altogether. They don't have to worry about it. Someone's got a problem with a cat, they call the Board of Health. Board of Health calls me. I report to the mayor and the Board of Health Director. My accounts, all my committee, report to me. All my carriers report to me. So it's structured, I just built it basically as a business plan. You know, the CEO of every business, I've worked middle management most of my career in automotive. So I know how to structure it and how it should be laid out. We have a mission statement. And we're not going to leave one cat behind, you know. So we, like I told them in Carney, I said, we're not, we have no illusions of saving the whole world. But we are going to save Carney. And just alone, the first month and a half of getting those numbers was so promising. You know, and he says, oh, well, don't forget you had snow. We had snow last year, too. I mean, people, the naysayers were, oh, you got snow. Well, they compared them against the same time frames. Actually, it was the whole month of November. We actually didn't get started until the 13th. So there's 12 days free in there. And we still had a 50% reduction. And the cats we've been bringing in each week, there's more and more and more. So I know our numbers are going to be greater coming the end of this month. When I report at six months, I'm probably going to see about a 60 to 75% reduction of intake from Bergen County animals. We'll be taking care of all of it. A lot of the cats we've been taking, we've been finding, they're very friendly. Where they're getting adopted. Most of the people in the residential areas that have the cats in their yards, they want them fixed. They want them back. They just don't want to see kittens all the time. And it's been a very minimal problem. You know, to see a cat in your yard is not a big deal. The spraying definitely has stopped, you know, and the deodorant. There's ways of keeping cats on the property with orange peels, coffee, things like that. You can keep them confined to your yard. And that, you know, it saves a lot of grief. I got to go out and be the customer service representative. I walk out, I dress nicely, I don't go out in my crazy cat guy clothes. I look good. And I come out nicely to the resident. And I try to find out their problems and I empathize with them. And we usually come to the solution, you know. I haven't had any fistfights with any of them yet, so I guess we come to solutions every time, you know. It's, and like I said, the mayor, he knew nothing about cats. He knew nothing about animals and her in general. He is now, I mean, he's ready to be a cat owner. Every cat colony we have in Carney, we have a lot of them. If you go Skyler Avenue East, it's the bulk of the cats. But every colony has an owl. Our mayor's name is Albert Santos.
Your time is up.
And we all have an owl. Time up? Okay. But do consider their proposal. If you'd like a copy of the Carney law, I can get one for you and...
Could you, could you please, sir, and send it to our township clerk?
Certainly can.
Leave any contact information that you may have with our clerk?
And any contact?
Thank you.
Council President, could I, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I was just going to ask, given Mr. Twist's experience, I wonder if we could give him leave for a little bit more time, just to ask him a couple of quick questions?
We're running, Councilman, I would like to. We can discuss it later, but we're just running behind time, sir. We have your contact information, sir. We thank you for being here. And we'll reach out to you, and we sincerely will.
Certainly.
We thank you for your time tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Twist. Yes, ma'am. Good evening. When you get to the podium, just please, your name and your dress. Thank you.
You're welcome. My name is Cecilia Pollak, and I'm from Montclair, New Jersey. The most humane and effective way to decrease the homeless stray cat population is through Trap Neuter Return, or TNR, which is good for the cats and the community as well. No more kittens, no more smell, no more noise. With TNR, cats are trapped, neutered, and vaccinated. So immediately, you have fewer cats and healthier ones. Whenever possible, an attempt is made to place friendly cats and kittens in good homes. With proper food, water, and shelter, the caretaker makes sure the colony is healthy and everyone is neutered and spayed. They are not the ones who cause the problems. They are the ones cleaning up other people's mess and spending the thousands of hours necessary that an ACO cannot. You need instead to go after the people who abandoned their pets or let them out unspayed or unneutered and support the caretakers and support TNR. For over 20 years, I have been doing Trap Neuter Return. And I've seen the dramatic drop in stray cats in every place I've done this and so did our town shelter. I have trapped, neutered, and returned over 500 cats myself. In addition, I helped form and lead a TNR effort in Montclair where we TNR'd about 800 cats in eight years. I spent hundreds, probably thousands of hours on the front lines, trapping, housing, transporting, returning the cats, feeding colonies, and overseeing feeding of colonies and dealing with the public. And the before and after difference I saw in those colonies that were TNR'd were like night and day, in a good way. In that time, there was a 50% reduction the first year in the complaints to the town about cats. And strays brought to the shelter were dramatically reduced. I believe if everyone were 100% on board, we could solve the homeless stray cat population tragedy in a short period of time. Most people are okay with the cats. It's the behavior that causes complaints. People don't like to see homeless, sickly little kittens wandering about, noise from mating and fighting, or smells from unneutered males. With TNR, no more kittens, no more noise, no more smell, and complaints are dramatically reduced. Who are these cats, anyway, out there? They are not some mutation of nature. They are our beloved pets who have either been abandoned or got out when they were not spayed or neutered. They are just plain old scared, not wild. Most were someone's pet. TNR, once explained, no more kittens, no more noise, no more smell, is accepted because people will help with life-affirming TNR rather than watch an innocent domesticated animal suffer or be put to death. Let these poor cats, abandoned by uncaring people, live out their lives in peace in their home, watched over by a caretaker doing TNR. It's the least they deserve in their unlucky lives. Support TNR. And don't forget, the caretaker is doing the job that the ACOs can't possibly do. do, because from my own experience, I know you have to spend thousands of hours out there, and ACO cannot. And if you let just one cat go, you're not going to solve the problem, because that cat is going to reproduce. So please, support the TNR. It's a community thing, not just a cat thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lauren Snellerhoff. I'm a West Orange resident, and a West Orange business owner. I've been volunteering with the West Orange Animal Welfare League for 10 years, more than 10 years at this point. And I am not speaking for them, I'm not an officer of them, but I am an active volunteer. I'd like to give some local perspective to this issue. The current killing isn't working. And over 10 years of volunteering, I have gotten much less rose-glast, you know, about this, this issue. Not every cat is, is going to, you know, is savable. Animals will be put down. Sometimes it is the most humane thing to do. So it is not an unrealistic, you know, perspective that I have. But every time there's a complaint about animals in one of the, the areas where they congregate, they have a bunch of animals put in, they sit there terrified in their cages, miserable for seven days, because that's state law, and then they're killed. What happens when those animals are brought in, other, we only have a certain number of cages in the animal control facility, and I don't know how many council members have been there, but it is not a big facility. It is very, very small. Those animals take the place of other animals that can be adopted. They are not adoptable animals, but there is only so much room. It's not a nice thing, it's not a fair thing, but it is the situation, and it's a situation we have to deal with. TNR takes care of the issues that people complain about. They complain about cats making noise, spraying, you know, food being left all over the place. Controlling the situation is a much better solution for the people who complain and the people who like animals. People dump cats. In my 10 years volunteering with this organization, I have three cats that were dumped. It's still going to happen, and, you know, killing the animals doesn't take care of the problem. If it did, we wouldn't have this issue. But this is 10 years that I have had personal experience with this. It doesn't get rid of the animals. But it does take away the nuisance. So it's really a win-win for everyone. I would also say that a lot of the animal welfare organization here in West Orange is privately funded. This organization does not take any money from the town. We pay for spays, we pay for neuters. Obviously, we're doing that for adoptable animals, and I couldn't, I can't speak for the organization as not being an officer for, you know, whether or not we would, you know. But I would also say that, you know, I started a Facebook page for the organization six months ago, and we went from zero to 218 followers, who very regularly participate in discussions about animals on this page. I am very confident that we would be able to find a very dedicated core of volunteers to help with this, this, this effort, because we're very passionate about it. We care very much about the animals in our community, and, you know, we've, we've really seen happy endings in a lot of cases, so.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Snellerhoff?
Yes, ma'am. No, Mr. Kefal?
Oh, not about cats.
We're still talking about cats, right? Are you, are you talking about cats?
Yeah.
All right. Can I take your, the phone, I know, I'm sorry. I'm going to stand up, I can't see. Yes, ma'am.
I'm standing up already.
Sorry.
Really quickly, my name is Lisa Hamer. I'm a resident of West Orange on Oak Ridge Road.
Welcome tonight.
Thank you. I'm a new resident. I moved here in August, and I love the town. Prior to living in West Orange, I lived in Hoboken and West New York, which also has, you know, is overrun with stray cats. I started getting involved in TNR in 2008. I want to really touch real quickly on the stigma of people that want to do this. I mean, there is a stigma to the cat person, the cat lady. I'm a successful, educated controller for a developer in Hudson County. I run tens of millions of dollars in development. We have a lot of land. That's what started me getting involved. I would go to the, you know, my owners of my company are not cat people, or pet people for that matter, and they, I said, you know, can I just go to our, our land before we develop it, check it out, some of the empty lots, and start getting involved? And, and they allowed me to do that. As a result, the first two years, probably 2008, 2009, I rescued countless kittens, probably 25, 35 kittens, some adults that I thought could be socialized and turn around, and I do all of the adoption myself. Probably the last three to four years that I've been doing it, there are no kittens in my lots anymore, because all the adults are TNR'd, they're fixed, they're returned. I have a set feeding station that I control, and the population is no question controlled in several of the lots throughout Hoboken for my development. I've had other developers come to me and ask me to do the same for their properties, and I've done that. I rescue the kittens, take in a couple of the adults if they're social, fix the other remaining adults, their problems are done. It's such a beneficial program, TNR. I use PFA for these, I didn't even know you, but I've used a PFA for all of these neuters and spays. They have a pickup right here in West Orange at the Pet Co., which is very exciting to me as a West Orange resident, when I found that out, because I've been going back and forth to Hillside, but they actually have a neuter scooter that comes to Pet Co. right in town here. And there's just so many benefits to controlling the population. I mean, and the last thing I want to say is, again, which I didn't hear anyone touch about, is pest control. I mean, the reality is, there have been some smaller communities, not necessarily even in New Jersey, that have removed, trapped and removed all the cats, and then they're overrun with pests. And they say, oh, shoot, should bring back some of the cats, because the reality is, there are pests, and, and if you have businesses and restaurants and dumpsters, you're going to have pests. The spayed and neutered adults can control the pest population as well. Even if they're feeding, they're still natural hunters, even if they're being fed by adults, they are not going to not hunt. They're hunters, it's part of their deal. So it's, it's just such a win-win for the community. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Anita Utenin. I live on Hazel Avenue, lifelong West Orange resident. I was here at the meeting in September. Thank you for readdressing this topic. I appreciate the chance to come and speak. I'm also very active with the West Orange Animal Welfare League for the past two years. I didn't even realize that we had that organization until the mayor had put something on his Facebook page about them needing donations. And now I collect donations for them from coworkers, friends, neighbors, bring them over each month. In my own neighborhood, we had a situation about four years ago, where an elderly neighbor who had about five cats, he passed away, and his family thought, well, they're cats, they can take care of themselves, and they just turned them out into the neighborhood. These cats were not spayed or neutered. I was not aware at the time of what had happened, but suddenly we had a group of cats that showed up in our neighborhood. And then we began having kittens in the neighborhood. On my own, I managed, by feeding them, to be able to trap them, get the adults spayed and neutered, get to the kittens in time to socialize them before they became what are called feral cats. There's a window of time when they can become accustomed to humans, and I was able to get the kittens all spayed, neutered, vaccinated, and found homes for them. When I do the math, that I see online about how many cats can result from an unspayed or unneutered cat left to go wild, they can produce anywhere between 1 and 400 cats in their lifetime. With the 12 I've taken off the street, that saved about 1,200 to 4,800 that would be roaming my neighborhood in West Orange. Now, I was concerned about the feeding ban being put into effect without any provision for residents who are trying to do what I've been doing, get the adults spayed and neutered, get to the kittens in time. I visit our animal shelter every month, and it is a small facility. There are times I've called to say, there are kittens that are born on my property, spoke to the animal control officers, who are wonderful people, but they would say, all of the cages are full right now, we have no room to take them in. Would you be able to take care of them until we have space for them? And I've been lucky that I've been able to take care of them and get them adopted out without having to go through the shelter. So I am in support of this proposal, going on record as saying I will be one of the volunteers, I will help with the program gladly. And I would also just like to mention that during the past few years, while we've had this active cat colony that we've managed to reduce in my neighborhood, my neighbors have all commented that, wow, we're not getting field mice in our garages or basement anymore. So having a managed number of cats in the community does help reduce rodents, and my neighbors and myself have seen that benefit from it. So thank you for the opportunity to come back and speak.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Are there any other residents who'd like to speak on? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, I'm Judy Steer.
Hi.
The ultimate cat lady. We do have a plan. I'm sorry?
Address.
Oh, 1026 Smith Manor Boulevard, West Orange. We all knew that.
We all knew that.
I know. Yeah.
Thank you, Judy.
Been recognized, I guess. We do have goals, and the goal is to TNVR all homeless cats in West Orange. We hope to create a committee, which certainly have enough volunteers, that those that are just, were able to come tonight, plus more I have a list of at home. Some of these people I've never physically even met, but we have met on Facebook, TNRAM, West Orange 411. It's amazing how this has just grown in a short period of time. We will be applying for a 501(c). We will be an organization. We will be the sponsors. If we can find another sponsor, that would be wonderful. But right now, this is the plan. We need to educate caregivers. PFA is willing to do the program. Also amongst our volunteers, we have two certified TNR members. I didn't even know there was a certification for it, to tell you the truth, but I learned I think caregivers will be more willing to come out to such an organization and let us, reach out to us to help them. We won't have to depend on the health department also to notify us of any complaints. That's our only source there. There are various low-cost spay-neuter. Just brief, PFA Hillside, who mentions, they do pickup, it's very convenient, at Pet Co. You have Well Pet Care in Cedar Grove, they do low cost. Dr. Cameron Montclair, I'm sure, will participate. I'm hoping we can get in touch with a couple of West Orange vets that might be willing to do, if it's two a month, one a week, whatever they're willing to do, we'll take. We know we're going to have to perform fundraisers and apply for grants. As someone, Jane said, I believe, and I figured it out, just one cat and one male mating can produce two litters a year. Repeating myself, but that's six kittens per litter, that's 12. You multiply that by 10, 20, 30, you've got a large problem. We can stop that. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
It's so nice to have, it's so nice to have you here this evening.
I'm sorry.
It's nice to have you here this evening and
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
It's our pleasure. Thank you. Any other residents who'd like to be heard on our, on the program? Yes, Mr. Malanga. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Councilman Mrs. Bergen. And good evening to all members of the council. I won't repeat what's been said.
Can you state your name and address?
Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road, West Orange.
Thank you.
Thank you. I won't repeat what's just been said, I, but I think that the conclusion has to be that this is a slam dunk for the township. You have an enormous, dedicated group of people who are concerned with animal welfare. They can create the organization, they can create the infrastructure, and I think that the township council should support this wholeheartedly, because it's a benefit to the township, it's a benefit to the animals, and as Mahandas Gandhi said, "The measure of a society can be judged by how it treats its animals." So please support TNR. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Anyone else, any other residents? Okay. Anyone, I'm sorry, anyone else like to speak on other issues?
Contact. Great. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Twist. Good evening.
Good evening. We're with the West Orange Arts Council.
Good to have you here this evening. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Carol Black Lemon, Colony Drive East, West Orange, New Jersey.
Bill Kefal, Windy Way. I'm just going to introduce Carol, which she's going to describe a major project for the town that she and Heidi, she and Heidi cooked up, but I'll let her explain that to you. Just a quick update on the West Orange Arts Council. We've been working very closely with the library. We got a grant for this year, to get joint grant, we're putting art workshops once a month for the year. We have, we do poetry at the library, we do creative connection, which Carol runs at the library. We also set up a gallery at the library. We installed a, a hanging system in the meeting room, and Carol is on view there, and there's, will be, has an opening on, on Saturday, so I could, you could just hand those around. And that's all I'm going to say. I think I covered everything we do at the, I think we covered everything we do at the library, and Carol's going to talk to you about our project.
Thank you, Bill.
The project that we'd like to introduce to the town is the Faces of West Orange Express Your Selfie. And basically, this spring, the West Orange Council, Arts Council, is kicking off a great creative community project, where West Orange residents of all ages are invited to show the entire, entire community who they are with the selfie. We'd like you all to join us and be part of a community portrait, where we'll, we'll celebrate the beauty and the diversity of West Orange. And I'll give you those to pass around. And basically, we just want people to help us in bringing out the beauty and the diversity of West Orange, and taking pride in what it is that we have, which is our diversity, and it's a great opportunity for our community to know your neighbors. And what we'll do is, people can send their selfie very easily, nothing else needed, but to send it to info@westorangeartscouncil.org, or, and we'll print it out, and we'll first display it in the library on the showcase wall, and we'd love all of you and all our entire community to be part of this great initiative in bringing out the vibrancy of our community and our community pride. So we hope you'll all be part of that. Any questions?
We could hold it up so Mac can zoom in on your flyer.
Hold the flyer to the cameraman, and he'll zoom in on it, so all our residents can see it.
So we have, from the youngest of residents to the most elderly residents, and we think it's just going to be a lot of fun to identify your neighbors and people that you may not know their names, but you'll recognize their faces, and they could be your neighbors. So we hope that we'll all have fun with this project.
You make sure that the township clerk gets a copy of that, whether you can send it to her and email it up, and we'll put it on the township website.
That would be great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you, Mr. Kefal. Anyone else from the, to speak before the council? Yes, Mr. Meyerwitz?
Yes, Mr. Dryer.
Oh, okay.
The Burden.
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Robert Dryer. I live on Kinzel Lane in West Orange. I am here to see you
it's just going to be a lot of fun to identify your neighbors and people that you may not know their names, but you'll recognize their faces, and they could be your neighbors. So, we hope that we'll all have fun with this project.
You make sure that the township clerk gets a copy of that, whether you can send it to her and email it up, and we'll put it on the township website.
That would be great. Thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you for your time this evening. Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Anyone else from the, to speak before the council? Yes, Mr. Meyerowitz?
Ah, Mrs. Dryer.
Oh, okay.
The firm, Mr. Malanga.
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
My name is Robert Dryer, I live on Kinzel Lane in West Orange. I am here this evening to talk about something not as pleasant as the previous speakers, the battery park redevelopment. I understand that a new element has been added, and PRISM is seeking approval from the township to modify the redevelopment agreement. PRISM, as you well know, has been a serial defaulter over the last nine years. Their new partner, I am informed, has told members of the town council that they will provide no documentation about the new arrangement. And I don't know now whether it's the town council, or Mayor Parisi, or somebody hidden deep in the recesses of this building who will act on behalf of the township in deciding whether or not to approve the changes in the redevelopment agreement. That's never been made clear. Mayor Parisi, at a meeting I attended in this room, said he had the authority to do that. So perhaps what I'm speaking about now is really not relevant to this group, although I think you can, if you've put your minds to it, assert your authority and certainly have an influence on the outcome. Basically, I think in considering what is put before you in this matter, you should consider perhaps what you'd have to testify at some time in the future, how you exercised your due diligence in performing your fiduciary duties on behalf of the town. There's not enough information to really get into the details about what is involved in this proposed change. I hope that information becomes available to the administration, to the town council, and to the residents of West Orange, and then there can be an informed debate about the proper course. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dryer. Yes, Mr. Meyerowitz. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Mark Meyerowitz, I'm at 19 Howell Drive. I, of course, second, you know, I agree with what Mr. Dryer just spoke about. I know the mayor announced this new deal between PRISM and Dune a month or two ago, and I was wondering if there's any new information about that, because there hasn't been, as far as I know, there has not been an agreement announced between the two. But I think at this point it's become pretty clear that PRISM really is not financially capable of fulfilling their commitment to the redevelopment, that they're, they're in no financial position to build a building, they're not even in a financial position to start the building. So I think that we have to keep in mind that right now, the past couple of years, has been boom time for rental construction. You know, housing hasn't, purchase housing hasn't been as strong, but rental, rental developers have been doing extremely well. The rental market is very strong, and are all kinds of developers out there who are in great financial condition. And to stick with PRISM is kind of crazy. I mean, that's like, almost like deading out a bad, dead horse for the Kentucky Derby. You don't do it, if you have 15 other horses you could bet on. There are lots of developers out there who could take over this project, and I don't understand the commitment that the township has to PRISM. The township, the township, the mayor and you as the redevelopment authority should be looking to get this development built as quickly and as economically and as financially stable as possible. And even if they start, you know, who knows what's going to happen? They just may not have the ability to, you know, get more money out of Dune if they do reach an agreement. And it's very, it's highly speculative at this time, and there's really no reason for the township to gamble and to waste time with PRISM when there must be a zillion developers out there. I, you know, so, that's where I would start. I would start looking around and shopping around, because we've wasted years. You say you want to develop the downtown, well, you know, it's going to be hard to develop the downtown when the township looks incompetent. You know, people are going to say, I don't want to work in West Orange, I don't want to open a business or build a building, or wherever it is. You know, they're, they look at that, and that thing is overgrown weeds, it's, who knows if it's financially, who knows if it's stable to actually be built, you know, structurally, if it's sound? You guys got to look for somebody else, you know, the time has come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. No, no, I'll get you next, sir.
Susan Ledcek, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. Like Mr. Dryer, Mr. Meyerowitz, I am here to address downtown redevelopment, specifically the equity partner that PRISM wants to take on, Dune. From what I understand, Dune will not provide any documentation on their financials, their history, or their projects. It is hard for me to believe that anyone in this room would enter into, into or approve a contract with a person or company without reviewing their history and their financial information. With Dune, we do not have this information. We need the documentation to see whether this is really a good deal for West Orange. This entire project has lacked transparency from the beginning, and that lack of transparency seems to be continuing. In addition, PRISM has been in default of their contract, which requires them to pay their property taxes on time. Why are we not holding them to the terms of the redevelopment contract? Why are we still dealing with them? And finally, could you please give me an update on the, on the status of the sound system in here? I know that there was some sort of contract to fix the problems, and for the first half hour of the presentation on TNR, we really had difficulty hearing, and then there was an adjustment made and it got better. So I'm just curious as to what is the status of this. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ray Kinzel, I'm from Two Glen Place, I'm a West Orange resident. And this is about...
Sorry, I'm sorry, could you repeat your name and address? We couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Ray Kinzel, from Two Glen Place, I am a West Orange resident. My main issue is, you have a contract with PRISM, you probably have a clause in there that you can terminate the agreement if they default, if I'm not mistaken. I'd like to have an answer from each one of you on why you haven't terminated the contract, and look for somebody else, and not have PRISM look for Dune. There's no documentation, like the other people have said. Are they going to furnish it, or what? That's my, that's my question.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. Excuse me. I have a few issues tonight, I probably won't get the time to cover all of them, but I do want to piggyback on what's just been said regarding PRISM. I would like to read a letter, and Kevin Malanga's here, but I'm going to read his letter so he can talk about something else. I think this letter encompasses everything and covers everything that needs to be said. Every reasonable person in the township of West Orange, except for the mayor and four members of the township council, has long ago concluded that the failure of the downtown redeveloper, PRISM, to pay its property taxes in a timely manner is an obvious sign that it lacks the financial wherewithal to complete the project. PRISM's troubled financial condition has now been confirmed by its proposed partnership with another developer. In May of 2006, while making a presentation to the township council, a representative of PRISM boasted that the company had $675 million in financing available to it. If that were true, why are these resources not being used to build the project on Main Street? Banks and insurance companies are awash with record levels of cash to loan to responsible developers. PRISM, it seems, is unable to avail itself of the capital markets. There has also been reports that PRISM is in litigation with its lenders on properties that PRISM owns on Main Street. To my knowledge, the township council has not investigated whether this is so. Given the comprehensively, the reprehensibly lax oversight of this project by the mayor and the township council, the citizens of West Orange must demand of the township council that PRISM not be permitted to engage a partner for this project until a complete accounting of all financial aspects of this project are made public, including audited financial statements and the disclosure of all ultimate beneficial owners of PRISM and its proposed partner. We keep hearing that the delay in developing the property is because of the litigation. I don't know if you guys remember James Carville from the Clinton era, something about it's not, it's the economy's stupid. Well, in this case, you have to be stupid if you don't realize they have no money. It's not the litigation, it's they do not have any money. And why we're prolonging it and giving them special consideration is a mystery. Just one brief thing, oh, I have a question for Mr. Guarino. You talk about the downtown alliance, I see a for rent sign in the Greek restaurant that moved in from Montclair. Will you tell us later why? That store's for rent. I spoke with Mr. Sayers regarding an incident that just occurred in South Orange, and it has to do with a scam. It seems that, I, this folder's filled with a variety of scams that are being perpetrated on unsuspecting victims. This latest one, an incident happened in South Orange, where somebody pretending to be a representative of a water company, got into the house with a friend of mine, an older woman, a little older than I am, and pretended he was testing the water power, the water pressure in the house. Turned out, he got into the bedroom before she could get around the house with him and stole jewelry. These scams are dangerous, especially when they're physical like this. I had spoken with Jack, they did get information out. I'd like to see, like, robo-calls and things like that when something happens. I did speak with the mayor, he was out of town, he did call me back, and I thought we would get a robo-call. I have tons of stuff in here. I'd like to have, see us have a township meeting regarding the various types of scams. This one's a dangerous one. If she had walked into the bedroom with him, God knows what would have happened to her. So we have to get the information out. We have, after a lot of time, I think, a very comprehensive and enforceable soliciting ordinance. And, you know, if they don't, the people in the town don't know about it, and they don't use it or know what they can do, it's not going to work. So, we need to get more information out. It's not only the seniors who are vulnerable. You have homes with kids, somebody knocks on the door, the kids run to open the door, you never know what can happen. We'll never be able to catch all the criminals, but I think the first start that we had, and a good one, is that ordinance. I'd like to see more done on getting public announcements out, especially now that this one is so close to us, and it could come over into this town. Thank you.
Good evening. Maryelle Clemmensen, Four Cherrywood Circle, West Orange. Just following up on what Rosary said, I didn't know what she was going to say, but because we just had this concern about the Brendan Tevlin disaster, I just want to reiterate that it would be a great idea to have some mechanism so that we can hear directly what's going on with police and incidents, and, you know, some, some way, I don't know, maybe like Roz has done assembling a group of people concerned about traffic safety, maybe you could do something about citizen safety with the police, maybe a small group of people that can then get the information out, perhaps on the town website, or, I mean, we need to do something. That's what we learned recently. We need to do something that brings us into the modern age to get some of this information out so that, that all of our citizens are safe. I know that when I saw what was posted on what Rosary talked about, I then posted it on the Facebook page for Rock Spring, and I think it was also posted on St. Cloud and Gregory. So now that we have this wonderful social media starting to percolate within our group, our township, maybe we can use that to better advantage to get some of this stuff out. On the PRISM thing, I guess what I would, would say is, I know we're going to hear gobs and gobs more on this, I guess, over the next few months. I think that if there's an opportunity to have a public meeting where all of the people can just make a statement and get the facts out, so we don't have to be, what did he say? What did she say? And, you know, it's just, I can't stand it, one more minute.[1589.53][1589.53][laughing] I'm going to scream. No, but there was an opportunity recently to have members of Dune and PRISM and the town council, all of us could have heard the same thing at the same time. Maybe somebody could have put a nice little PowerPoint together where legal points were there. Maybe it's a dream, where everything is just on one document, and then it just answers all these questions. I, I tend to think that this Dune thing is a very responsible partner, and they're going to get this thing off the ground, and PRISM is now relegated to a role that is more appropriate for PRISM, which is to be, you know, maybe the local partner for this major financial. Anyway, goodbye.
Thank you, Ms. Clemmensen. Okay. He's already spoken already, he can't come back up. Mr. Malanga, you already had your turn, according to protocol.
I'm committed on TNR, and I haven't been able to speak on this subject. I also am very concerned about the proposed partnership between PRISM and Dune. I feel that we are, again, in a situation where we do not have sufficient information pertaining to Dune, although if one does some research on them, they purportedly have assembled very substantial real estate investment funds, but if one looks at their website, there's not a single project that's shown on their website as to what they've actually completed. I, again, encourage the council to demand audited financial statements from PRISM, audited financial statements from Dune. We need to understand what the future of this project is going to be, and I think that we should conduct an investigation as to what went wrong with PRISM. PRISM has completed a project in Bloomfield, it's on the Parkway. How was it decided by PRISM to conclude that project, finish that project, rent it out, yet not do anything in the township of West Orange? It's been eight years since PRISM was selected as the redeveloper. I think it's unconscionable for PRISM to have done what has been done, stringing the township along, not paying its taxes, not performing and building the project. I urge you, as the responsible party, as the redevelopment agency of the township West Orange, to do what's appropriate, safeguard the interests of the citizens of West Orange, conduct an investigation, let's get to the bottom of this. And I, again, thank you for all your time that you spent on all these issues. It's 8:30 at night, I know you've all worked your primary jobs, you're here tonight late, and you're going to be here later than this. This is only public comment, but, again, thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing...
I think I heard it.
Yes, sir. Yes, please.
I certainly don't want to be here and be redundant. You've heard it all.
Can you state your name and address, please?
I apologize. Arthur Gordon, 3 Garfield Avenue, West Orange. And I think I had to just go to the bottom line, I had a lot of lines... And I think I had to just go to the bottom line, I had a lot of lines that I wrote out. I think what we need, and pretty promptly, is a very transparent and thorough view of what's going on with Prism, and now with a new equity owner, how that plays into things. I believe that we have, when I say "we," I mean the council and the community, the right to know in detail about budgets, about financial plans, about schedules and things of that nature. I'm living at 50 years, only dealing with the Edison battery works for the past eight or nine years, and it's just amazing that it can stay in the condition it's in without some, some form of forward action. Thank you again for your time and all your energy.
Seeing, yes, sir.
My name is Akil Kalfani, I'm at 39 Burt Street. How are you doing tonight? A couple of things. One, I wanted to bring up an issue real quick in reference to the Krausers on 2 Central Avenue. I don't know if you are aware of it or not, but they're, I guess they already have a liquor license, but they're planning to open a liquor store at that location where it used to be a dry cleaner, so I guess they bought out the dry cleaners, and they're now proposing, or not necessarily proposing, they've advertised that they have a liquor store that's coming there. And the concern I have is that, in that area, and I have some sheets for you all if you, if you'd be interested in them, I don't know your process, yes, there should be enough there for everybody, I was thinking you were one short, hang on. But it shows here that there's one, two, three, four, five, six, six liquor stores within a mile radius, and there may be another, and then obviously there's bars around. And my concern is that in the valley, we don't need another liquor store at this point. And I think that it is a problem that we're, we have yet another liquor store coming in here, in the valley here in West Orange, and, you know, what does that mean about the, the community, right? So that we already have these other issues sometimes that are in the area, and there's a liquor store literally in Orange and West Orange, right around that area, and I may even have missed one of them. But I'm just saying that we need, there's something, as a, as a concerned citizen, I would ask that we look into and really, is there, is there a way for us to stop that liquor store from being opened up? Because it, you know, there's just, there's just no need for another liquor store, and the potential problems right across the street, you just had 7-Eleven open up, you know, which was, you know, I think it was a great addition there, but also it brings a lot of young folks, and so now you have young folks who are there, and now the liquor store across the street. I think it's a, potentially a disaster waiting to happen. And then the other piece I wanted to do, to, to, to do, to talk about briefly was here looking at the Prism situation, you know, obviously you all ran for office, I ran for office, and you all won, so congratulations in that regard. But I did want to say that with regard to Prism, you know, I think that when I was reading the paper, and that they refused, not Prism, but the, the, the new company who's their partner, refused to give certain information to one of the council people, I think that, you know, that that kind of says something about where they're headed in the process if they're not willing to divulge their, their, their economic wherewithal and standing to even the council people. What does that mean when it comes to dealing with the citizens? And I think that we need to be, we need to have more transparency in the process, and that we need to have, you know, that we, that as, as the community, we want to be more reassured that what's going on in that process is one that is both transparent, and, and I just take the position that, that I still believe that that necessarily isn't the best project for that space, and that, I think that there's, the, the, the volume of people in a particular location is, is really too high in terms of the number of, of bodies that's going to be added to Main Street. Now, I really want you to consider that, that, that if that is something that happens, that, you know, we haven't developed any new infrastructural byways or, or, or ways in which the traffic is going to flow, it already, traffic already is there, and that area is already really tight, really dense, especially, you know, if you get off any time from 3 o'clock on, you know, it, it becomes very, very difficult in that area. So then the question becomes, once those places are rented, what, what are the implications for, and what is the plan for the movement of, of people in that area? And so I just ask that you consider those things, and, and, you know, I'm glad to participate and be involved in any way we can to, to move that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Seeing none, I close public comment. I'll start with Councilwoman McCartney.
Sure, thank you. So thank you really all for your comments, because we really are in a very frustrating situation. We also feel frustrated, frustrated by the lack of movement. We were excited, we were excited, just when we were asked to meet with this new partner for, I'm starting with Prism, that's kind of working backwards. It was really, they were, we were just asked, there are no changes to the agreement, the agreement, the change that we are being asked to approve, if and when it comes before us, is to add another financial partner. So they did not come to the meeting with documentation, they certainly are not going to, they didn't, they didn't ask to be, I don't know how to say it, to refuse providing documentation. What I was hoping that had already hap, would have already happened, is a full-fledged presentation right here as a council meeting. That's what I'm expecting. To me, that was an initial meeting so that we could meet this Dune partner, period. That's all that was. It wasn't secret. It was just a Wednesday, I believe, a Wednesday morning and afternoon that we scheduled time to meet with them. From there, I do hope, now they have to work out, the reason I, my understanding is that we don't have the documentation is because Dune and Prism still have to work out what the percentage of ownership is between them. That's not a decision we're going to make, that's a decision Dune and Prism have to make. So we're waiting. I am hoping that there will be a full-fledged presentation here, talk about a town meeting or public comment, that would be here. We don't own the building, so a lot of the comments that you're mentioning, you know, what we should start over, or do something different, or you don't like the plan, this isn't approved plan. In a perfect world, maybe we could plunk in the businesses that we want, but according to municipal and use law, if even the liquor store or the project itself, if it's zoned for that, that's what, that's what comes in. We can't pick and choose, even with the liquor store. If they're zoned for a liquor store, we can't say otherwise. I think I just have to reiterate that we don't own the building, so it's not that we're just going to start over. There's already, what's that?
My words.
Oh, okay, we don't own the building, we don't own the property, we haven't put anything into that project to date. And unfortunately, it is stagnant, we would like to see it move forward, and I'm hoping that this will be the infusion of money, the $26 million that they have pledged was part of their agreement, I'm hoping that that's what it will take to get this project off the ground, finally. I appreciate the comment about having a town meeting, I think Maryelle Clemmison had mentioned that, about more information, I think goes hand in hand with what Ms. Morelli said about public service announcement, basically on solicitation and different things. What the police have started at the beginning of January was Coffee with a Cup, and they are looking at different locations, it's very informal, but any concerns that you do have, they've been meeting quite a few people, show up. I don't have, if someone has the next date, I don't know what it is, but I believe it's at Whole Foods. And just show up, they meet in small groups, four police officers, and you can address your concerns right then and there, for them to take immediate action. I'm sure it's on our website somewhere, Coffee with a Cup. What else? That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. First of all, I want to thank all the people who came tonight with TNR. I felt it was very important to allow you the opportunity to come back and state, and the second presentation was much better than the first presentation. First of all, when you address people, you don't like to be threatened, especially with the comments from the last presentation, is, well, we're going to sue you. Well, you know what, that's not the way you do things. This presentation this evening was good, was great, actually, I'd say. Gave the council a lot more information, gives us more options to think about, and lets us have the data that we need to work with, to make and probably propose a good program, to satisfy everybody's needs and wants. So it was a fantastic presentation, I'm glad people turned out tonight. About the thing of openness with, you know, with scams and everything else, it was good it was brought to the council, because we need to protect our residents, and whatever we can do, whatever social media, whatever outlets we have in availability, we need to inform our residents of what's going on in neighboring communities, because at the end of the day, it's our responsibility. We need to look out for our residents and give them every wherewithal to protect themselves and their families, especially children, as was brought up. There are children in homes sometimes, you have people come in, you don't want to see something terrible, terrible happen. The other thing is, is Prism, we're all frustrated. I, I don't like when people come up and say, you know, we don't care, we do care. I'm frustrated we don't get the information. When I met with the developer, Dune, you know, we were the last questions, what do you foresee, what do you look forward in this project, how do you see your participation in the community? And they, and they answered those questions, fulfilled where they'd like to see this after the first phase is done. So, you know, yes, we'd like to have a, a meeting when everything's put in, but they're sharpening their pencils between Dune and Prism, who's going to have what percentage and everything else, and we know that can be frustrating. But we want the information just as much as you want the information. I just want to point out that the research I've done is, if anybody knows about Fort Lee, New Jersey, okay, they're finally getting, after 32 years, their downtown development done. And all they did too is numerous times, they defaulted the developer and they stopped the developer, and that stopped the project. Now, they've actually have good developers, they have a good working relationship, and now their project is, is going to be moving forward. It's a huge project, and it just needs, you, you need to work, and we need to get the right information, and we need to look at all the pieces. I believe Dune will be a good partner, and maybe Dune will push Prism to get this project going and be the lead. I don't know. I, I don't know what the final legal setup will be, but I would like to see this project going. It'll be a great thing for the community. We need to have development in West Orange, take the burden off the homeowners. And that's it. Councilwoman Spango.
Thank you, Council President. I would kind of like to piggyback on what Councilwoman McCartney said. The redevelopment is frustrating to all of us, but we were exactly asked to do, what Councilwoman McCartney said, we were asked to come in and meet with Dune and Prism, and they were introduced as an equity partner. The reason, as Ms. McCartney stated, is they are still working out the percentage of their ownership. We're just as frustrated. We thought that they were going to put the shovel to the ground by April, I mean, April's next week, so I don't really know what's going on with that, but, I mean, we want to see it all come together and work as much as the town of West Orange does. As far as Mr. Kalfani, again, Councilwoman McCartney said it, and I'll say it, having sat on the zoning board for seven years, as for, as far as the liquor store, as long as they're within the zoning for that district, I don't think there's anything we, the public can do to stop a business. Let's see, what else? Ms. Morelli, I think that was a great suggestion for the robo calls. We can all talk about social media, and I did hear about that scam in South Orange, but not everybody, as you know, you deal a lot with seniors, not everybody has computers, not everybody's with social media, and I would like to speak to the mayor a little bit more, I think a robo call would be a great idea, because this time it was jewelry, it could be something really worse with a life or a home invasion, so I think that was a great recommendation, and I will follow through on that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kukrovjak?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just appreciate everybody who came here to speak tonight. It was a large number of people, it was nine, I'm sorry, 17 speakers. And those of you who have been watching council meetings at, at home, know that we have had very few public comment speakers the last few months, the weather seems to have really, yeah, we even had...
Zero.
We, we had one, we had one meeting where nobody spoke at, at public comment. So I'm glad to, to see people out and speaking to the council and providing us input. I just wanted to follow up with some of the questions that were asked, and perhaps some of you, we could get some response from the administration. Mr. Meyerwitz asked if there was any new information available on what's going on with Prism and Dune. Just as background, Prism and Dune, the mayor announced early this year that the two sides had, had agreed to come together for the project, and that Dune was going to invest $26 million. And I guess the council people spoke with them in mid-February, it's now end of March, and we still don't have any agreement, so it would, it would be interesting if we could find out what's going on with, with the Dune and, and Prism. So I throw that out to the administration. Mr. Kinzel, if I pronounce that correctly, asked that each of one of us ask why we have not moved to, each, the council people not moved to terminate the Prism as the designated redeveloper because they are, are in default by failing to stay current on their property taxes. My answer is that if they do not comply with the terms of the contract, we should terminate it. It's very clear that they have to be current on their property taxes, and they aren't. They haven't paid their February taxes. They spent most of last year not paying their property taxes. It's a clear event of default under the redevelopment agreement, and I have pushed my colleagues to try to make them comply with the agreement. I think it's a great idea to have a public meeting on scams. I think Ms. Clemmison and some of the other folks from Rock Spring actually helped put together a, a public meeting here in council chambers to talk about the Brendan Tevelin murder and the follow-up investigation, and perhaps she could work with Ms. Morelli to put together a meeting on, on the scams and maybe even telecast it, videotape it, and get it up on the website to reach more people, especially the seniors who can't make it to the meeting. So I think that's a, that's a great idea. Just to try to clarify, when Prism and Dune came to meet with the council people, they said that they would answer any questions that we had, and I requested both the administration and from them, there in the meeting, documentation of what they planned to do. And it would seem to me that if there's, one of the companies wants to invest $26 million, I'll bet you they have lots of documentation on how that money is supposed to be used and how the ramifications of the agreement are going to impact our project, and I was told that there wouldn't be any documentation other than a resolution that would come before the council. And I actually asked them at the, at the meeting with them, and nobody contradicted me. And I just think it's, it's not acceptable for us to not take a look at this point, to see exactly what's going on with the project, and as everybody points out, why it hasn't moved forward. And I also wanted to reiterate, Ms. Lenchek, Lenchick, if I pronounce that correctly, she had, and asked for an update on the sound system, this has been talked about for the last several months, and of course, when we're sitting up here, we can't tell that you guys can't hear back there, so we appreciate you keep coming, and I know the administration's been working on it, so perhaps we can get some information on them and where, on where that stands with the sound system in this, in this room. That's, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Cirillo?
Thank you, Council President. I, I just want to start off by thanking former Council President McCartney for this nice gift.
Yes.
It's, uh, take cards that we consider constituents, like a little envelope, so we all got a little present from former Council President.
Thank you.
So if you get in touch with me or you contact me in some way, you can get one of these cards back, so, thank you, Council, Councilwoman. I do want to thank all the residents that came today on the TNR... I do want to thank all the residents that came today on the TNR issue. We were educated on that alternative, and it's very promising. The gentleman from Carney, what, you know, what a proactive approach that he's taken and that's very commendable and inspiring to us here in the township as we look for an answer on the best solution. As it relates to the redevelopment, Council President.
Yes, sir.
I was part of the discussion. We did have a meeting, and there was a projected calendar that was presented to us. I did ask the question whether or not the LOI or the agreement had been put in place yet, the letter of intent, the agreement between the Prism Corporation and Dune Capital Partners. And I was told that that wasn't the case. So that calendar that was shared with us, that told me that it's just a proposal. Until the LOI, until they come to an agreement on the specifics of that relationship, we're not going to see them before us. So the point that I'm making is that it's still a little bit premature to talk about this, but Mr. Malanga makes an excellent point in terms of due diligence. We need to make sure that we update these cash flow charts that should this matter be moving forward, we expect a little bit of, a little bit more hard work and more information to be made available to us so that we can, we can keep an eye on that, on that proposal and see the public policy through, at least on my end. Otherwise, I would, you know, we're starting to feel a little bit, in terms of information not being available, we're starting to feel a little bit left out in a way. So that's the issue of redevelopment. The other matter that I wanted to talk about was the scams. It's a great concept, and I think that I would lend myself to help in hosting something so that we can educate members of the public on potential scams out there. Absolutely. So I'm here. I'm available. So that's all, Council President.
Thank you. I just like to interject that I like to see financials too. My way I do my due diligence, the way I do my work, is to see financials. So I'd like to see some documentation, and I hope it'll be coming short, you know, shortly because that would make, it gives you a comfort level. If you see something in black and white, you know, you get a comfort level. But that's what I'd like to see. Thank you, my colleagues. Madam Clerk, continue the agenda, please.
Consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting February 24th, 2015, and March 10th, 2015.
Consent.
Report of township officers, municipal judges' report, February 2015.
Consent.
Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman McCartney.
Sure, thank you. I would like to pull Resolution B because it relates to one of our ordinances.
B as in boy.
B as in boy.
Yes.
Am I looking at the right gen?
101-15.
101-15, special law enforcement officer.
What ordinances are you making, too?
Request for business--
And C, Resolution C.
And Resolution C?
Right. Granting a waiver for obligation, only because Lenny's not here. I know.
Okay. Councilwoman Spango?
I had questions on Resolution C, which Councilwoman just pulled already. And where is it? I just saw it. I would just like to talk about Resolution 111 to let the residents know about the townwide garage sale, how it's a fundraiser for Project Graduation, rather than just pass it and not talk about it. It's Project Graduation in partnership with West Orange High School PTA. They have a graduation celebration every year, and they are doing a fundraiser where Project Graduation will charge $25 per home, and you would get a Project Graduation lawn sign and a map and a listing of all the participating homes. And basically, what it's going to be is like a townwide garage sale. And all the funds go to Project Graduation, and instead of paying, we are reneging on the $5 fee. I know it's been packed up.
How's that sound back there now? Is that, can you hear that well?
I'm not going to touch it, okay. Instead of the $5 fee that would be paid by the town, the $25 would go to Project Graduation.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
I believe that I am okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Kroviek.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to pull Agenda Item F, Resolution 105-15. The resolution introduced the 2015 municipal budget. And then I also had a question that I wanted to sort of throw out to my colleagues about Agenda Item A, Resolution 100-15. It's a resolution extending the deadline for payment of sewer charges. And if I could, if, just to refresh memory, last year, we raised the sewer charge from $175 to $250 and caused a bit of concern from a lot of people. And I had suggested that perhaps we revisit this because the issue, at least potentially, is that we have not been charging a fee close to our actual cost each year. What we've done is we fixed a fee and kept that going for several years. And then you run into the situation where perhaps the revenue is not enough, and so we have to subsidize our service from other areas or vice versa, where now we're getting, we may be getting too much money. So not appropriate, I don't think, to take too much money for sewer service if it's not costing us that. So I realize that Resolution 100 simply extends the deadline for payment of sewer charges and that the sewer bill hasn't gone out yet, but I wanted to throw it out to my colleagues as to whether we wanted to revisit this so that perhaps we change the policy that we start charging a number each year that closely corresponds, correlates with the actual cost of our service.
To increase it every year? You mean a smaller increment?
Well, if it goes down, we could reduce it.
I think it would be frightening, excuse me, I think it would be frightening to see that number.
If I can just interject just for a second, just so that everyone's on the same, this part of the page, anyway, the same page. We did not do an analysis this year of our, of the actual total costs all in, including the amortization of the, of the building and maintenance of the system, the, within the township. But we did, actually, it was, I guess now two years ago, that we, we did do that analysis. And at that point in time, the, when we raised the 250, that did not cover the total cost. And that cost has not gone down, certainly. It may have gone up. But, you know, so the council was right, there was some discussion at that point in time as to whether or not council wanted to revisit this on an annual basis. And certainly, you all can discuss that. We have done an analysis, but certainly, and I, I don't have the exact numbers here tonight from what we did, but it was, it was probably somewhere in the area of, you know, 80 to 80 percent or so. So, yeah, so there's, there is some room to go up to, if council's intention is to ultimately cover the cost of--
So that's not up for discussion, isn't it, right?
It has nothing, that is not related to this particular resolution. It's a trigger to this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Resolution's a trigger to this discussion.
Mr. Gross, you are correct in what you're saying, and also, being the council liaison to the Joint Sewer Authority, West Orange is, our fees are very low compared to a lot of other municipalities. And it's not only just the sewer usage that the fees that are paid to Joint Sewer Authority, and you might want to talk about this a little more. West Orange is responsible for the infrastructure, correct?
That's true.
So that 250 is not only the use of the Joint Sewer Authority, that's to take care of whatever we're responsible within the township to flush everything out, so.
That's spot on. That's exactly the case. So underneath, underneath every street, or almost every street, are sewer lines that are maintained. And, you know, when we have to do repairs on them, it's the repair of the sewer line, it's the repair of the streets and the reconstruction of the streets after we do the repairs. So pump stations, I mean, there's just a lot of infrastructure in place that this 250 contributes to, doesn't cover yet.
We just spoke about the fees with all the municipalities, and West Orange is very low compared to a lot of them.
Okay.
Probably the lowest.
Councilman, are you pulling this or you just added a question?
No, no, I didn't want to pull it. I wanted to bring this up to everyone to see if maybe by the next, I know I sent an email and asking for some of this information, haven't gotten it. I just wondered if maybe we want to try to look at this at the next council meeting.
Sure.
Would that give--
Yeah, if council wants to do an analysis, I mean--
Okay. It's been requested, so we could. It'd be good. Thank you. Anything else, Councilman?
No, I just, but I did want to pull Resolution 105.
Okay. Councilman Cirillo?
Yeah, I just have a quick question on 102-15, Council President. Just the justification for the permission.
I already pulled that.
That's been pulled. Councilwoman McCartney pulled that.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney.
And I'm not pulling, I have no questions. They've been already addressed.
Okay, with the exception of Resolutions B, C, and F, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Resolution 101-15, resolution authorizing the reappointment of SLEL Robert Stock as Class I Special Law Enforcement Officer, specifically the Parking Enforcement Officer for a period of one year, was pulled by Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. So my question is that, when I say it's related to an ordinance that's also pending, this position, we were always told during the budget, that it sustains itself between the enforcement of this retired police officer. My question is, again, related to the ordinance, that it looks like we're adding a parking meter collection title.
It's changing from one person to another. We've had that title, that title's been in the budget for years.
Right, that person's--
The guy who was doing it has retired.
Okay, so here's--
That's not enforced.
That has nothing to do with that.
Not the true difference.
All right, that's my point. My point is, why couldn't that parking meter collector, I would feel more comfortable if a police officer were handling the collection of this as opposed to a Department of Public Works person? And also, does this involve, this position involves a repair of the equipment also? We have these new pay stations--
Which position you talking about?
About the parking enforcement officer.
Parking enforcement officer only does parking enforcement.
Right, so I'm, is there a way to make it enforcement collector and repair?
He doesn't collect money. He doesn't do any of that. He just writes summonses.
Okay, so this other parking meter collector, do they also, is there any kind of certification for repair or who does the repair on these things?
No, we usually contract that out. We don't repair the meters.
So--
That position has been held by a person in public works for as long as I've been here and probably 20 years before I got here. He retired, and we are now moving that salary into another person's position who already works for us.
It's important to note that the increment for that responsibility is like $2,200. It's not, you know, it's not the entire salary. That's the salary, the regular, employee's regular salary plus--
Being added to his position.
Yeah, well, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Mr. Gross, can I get you to just speak into the microphone? I know, I noticed you don't have a microphone, so maybe you could borrow, just help people to hear. Thank you.
That's the point I'm trying to make. If this position, right, I know we're saying it's an enforcement, I'm looking to make that position more comprehensive so that it can sustain itself.
He's only a part-time employee. If I have him collecting money and fixing meters, he's going to spend 10 hours a day writing summonses rather than 25 hours a week doing what he's supposed to be doing. He's a class two officer. His job is to issue summonses in all our parking areas. The other job has to do with maintenance and collecting the money. They're two different functions, and it shouldn't be done by a police officer. Absolutely not.
How is it safe for a Department of Public Works person to collect funds?
He's been doing it for years.
And was, and is there a specific person in mind that is, that is now the new collector?
Absolutely. All we're doing is adding $2,200 to the individual salary, which is what we have done over the past 15 years since I've been here, except that that gentleman retired.
I know. I'm still uncomfortable with that. I still would like to see this one position sustain itself and be comprehensive.
I'm not following where you're going with it.
Well, the funds, certainly the funding is sustaining. I mean, to the extent that there's, we have a certain amount of money that comes in for violations, for--
The enforcement of it.
Well, for violation, on top of violations, but just, just the meters themselves, the revenues that come from the meters more than cover both of those salaries.
So, and do the same revenues cover the repairs if they need, he'd need to be repaired?
I've not done an analysis on that side. I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I wouldn't know the answer to that question at all.
And the collection?
Well, remember, in this case, the collection is costing $2,200.
Per year to a current employee.
I still, I don't, why can't it be all encompassing? Why can't this position be all--
Why would you want to have the officer who are paying--
Because it's an officer.
You trust an officer more than you trust a man from DVW?
Well, it's not a matter of trust.
Well, then, why would you want an officer rather than the DVW employee?
Because they want it to be comprehensive and sustaining.
Yeah, but it would take away from his time of going around town and doing his job to collect, because he'd have to take time out of his schedule.
And why couldn't, right, so as he's doing enforcement, he can't be collecting at the same time? Doesn't have to be--
Well, collection, collection is, is more, is pretty time consuming in that sense because, I mean, when you've got to go, you have to, you know, pick it up and then bring it back to the bank. So, I mean, it does take a lot of time. One of the reasons that the special officer, that we use a special officer as a special can actually write summonses. And so the time, to the extent you take time away from writing summonses, you're going to get less revenues from, on the violations than we're getting now. So it's, I mean, there, you, not only do you have the collections, but you have the revenues for the, for the violations, which, you know, which leads itself to compliance and to cover the cost of doing the enforcement. So it's really probably not a good use of that particular officer's time to have him going back and forth to the bank.
But if this is a part-time position, I'm sorry, if this is a part-time position, is there a max on how many hours he can work?
Yes, he's a retired police officer.
Right, but is there a max on how many hours he can work? Can we add that, can we add an hour or so for him to do the collection?
Why would you want to pay him more money to do the job that somebody else is already doing for $2,200? We have over 500 meters, I believe, correct? You know how long, that's not something you do in five minutes. It doesn't work like that. You have to go to each meter, open it up, empty it, bring, put the coins into a bag or a pail or whatever they use, and then at the end of the day, you've got to go back and do a deposit and make sure that that money gets deposited because it's all cash. I just, I'm, I got to be honest with you, I don't see your point, and I'm not sure what it is. But it's cheaper to do it the way we're doing it right now.
Is there a motion?
If I could, I also, I was glad you pulled this because I have a slightly separate issue that I wanted to raise with my colleagues, which is, as the point was made, he's, he's a part-time worker and he's a retired police officer. I thought, and have thought since I've been on the council, that because he is retired and is getting, I guess, a state pension from his, from his service, that he was restricted in the number of hours that he could work and still maintain his benefits. And I, if I understand Mr. Gross's email today, he said that he can work more hours if he wants, or if we wanted him to. We could at least approach him on that. I think that we should consider having him work more hours. I realize that we'll have to pay him more, but it's also likely that, twofold. One, that he will be able to find more violations, and two, I hear a lot from residents and particularly business owners down in the valley part of our town who say that because of the limited hours that he works, and he works on a, on a rather regular schedule, that people park illegally as soon as they know that he's passed-- illegally as soon as they know that he's passed through the area. And I wanted to just raise this issue with my colleagues because obviously we could use more, not only use more revenue, but we could also help our residents who are trying to park where people are parking illegally, and also help the businesses who could benefit from people being able to park and easily reach their stores. So, I just wanted to throw this out at this time, sort of while we're in the middle of the budget process, and just, obviously, we don't have the numbers or we're not ready to talk about. But I would like to throw this out again. Perhaps we could talk about it at the next council meeting and get more input from the administration on whether that, whether that would work. I don't know if there's any other reason why the hours that he works are limited, but I think it could be a good deal of benefit to, in a couple of different areas.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 101-15?
Some moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirilla?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Resolution 102-15, resolution granting limited waiver of obligation to install sidewalks on extended portions of Nance Road and Colonial Woods Drive was pulled by Councilwoman McCartney.
Yeah, same idea. The question was, was the justification for this waiver, if we're adopting complete street policies for safety, more pedestrian friendly, and then we make a, create a waiver that they do not have to install sidewalks on one side of the street? I, I know that our engineer's not here this evening, but I don't know if this is time-sensitive.
I, I.
I don't, I don't see the justification for.
I did have a conversation with legal this afternoon about this, where Kevin Duffy, and he indicated to me that his understanding of this was that, that this waiver was being recommended in accordance with our ordinances by the village, by the township engineer because, and that the justification was that other streets in that neighborhood were a similar case, that this was consistent with other streets within that neighborhood. So, I'm, well, I can't tell you that factually myself, but that's what was reported to me.
Right, this was an approved plan back in 2009. So, we are looking to implement sidewalks. I don't understand why we would make an exception to, to that, particularly adopting a complete streets sidewalk, talking about pedestrian safety advisory boards that we're trying to create. Maybe we can table this until Lenny's here to give us justification.
If I could just put in my, put in my two cents, I recently walked all of Colonial Woods Drive, and the portion of Colonial Woods Drive that we're talking about is an extension of the street that I think they're putting in maybe four mega houses. But the rest of the street, which is, I don't know, maybe a quarter or a third of a mile long, it's, it's a long street, only has sidewalks on one side of the street. So, what would, what we're talking about is putting in sidewalks that would be maybe, I don't know, but let's just say 100 feet long on both sides of the street, and then one of those sidewalks is going to end, and you wouldn't be able to continue walking down on sidewalks. You'd actually have to cross the street. Now, I know that it's not heavily traveled up there because there would only be four houses there, but it certainly would introduce, I think, an element of increased risk if people are walking down one sidewalk and then have to walk down, have to cross the street to get to the, to the rest of the sidewalk. So, and I'm not familiar enough with Nance to, to say, but I am familiar with Colonial Woods. It's only got one sidewalk, one side of the sidewalk.
That was my understanding. That was the rationale behind the recommendation.
With the complete street.
The same thing happened on Mount Pleasant Avenue, though, with the 347 Mount Pleasant Avenue. They have sidewalks to nowhere. Same idea. But the idea is that as the properties are developed, they will be required to put in sidewalks.
And this isn't fit to, this needs to fit the complete streets idea, the whole concept, and the whole concept of the safety, you know, so. Yes, Councilwoman?
I have, this is a question for Jack. Why are we doing this at all? Why are we, explain this. What's the reason for it?
I mean, I did not speak to Lenny about this, but my understanding, as John said, was that he wants to be consistent with the way the neighborhood is, and the sidewalks are only on one side of the street, not putting them on both sides of the street.
Maybe that's, you know, do you think?
You end up with sidewalks to nowhere. And that's also, you know, one of the concerns is, you know, to the extent that, as Councilman talked about, when you get to the end, unless you're going to figure out how you're going to extend it from that point forward, are you going to require property owners on the rest of the street to install sidewalks so that you do have it? I mean, it seems to me that you need to, to the extent that you were looking to implement this type of a plan, that one of the things you have to address is how do you, how do you encourage people to comply with the plan?
Well, I, I believe, I think if Mr. Lepore, if Mr. Lepore was here, we could get our questions. Maybe to your, to Councilwoman Spango, maybe we should table this for tonight and wait for Mr. Lepore to be in council chambers.
Someone has to make a motion to.
Go make a motion to table.
Second. Hold on, we have to take a vote. Councilman Cirilla?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
The resolution is tabled. Resolution 105-15, resolution to introduce the 2015 municipal budget was pulled by Councilman Kukovia.
Thank you. I just wanted to flag that this is a resolution to introduce our 2015 municipal budget, and because Mr. Gross and probably a lot of other people within the administration have gotten so good at moving the budget process along, it used to be that the budget process would drag well into the fall. His email today was that he thinks that there might be a public hearing on this in a month. I thought I would just flag this just to give people an idea that it's out there. The budget is, the 2015 municipal budget is now available for people to review. I found this out today. It's, you can go to the website and look in the left side where it says budget. You'll be able to click on it and, and find the budget itself. And I just wanted to throw out some numbers from the budget. I just started looking at this, so I don't know a lot, but there's been a proposed, the proposed budget is, is suggesting a slight decline of about $26,000 in the total appropriations and total revenues of the township to about $73.75 million. And so, we're not, we're, we're keeping a lid on, on total spending. But when you look at the tax levy, you see that the total municipal tax levy is proposed to go up almost 2%, a little more than $1 million. And also shows that the assessed value is projected this year. This is the total tax base where the taxes are taken out of. It's expected to decline again this year, about $7.5 million, which tends to suggest that our taxes will go up because there's not as big a pie to take the tax revenue from. That, the good news is that the administration projecting that the average assessed residential value here in town is actually going to go up slightly, about $420 to $337,918. That's, that's good news for people who own homes here. It's going up about 12 one-hundredths of a percent. Unfortunately, though, because the tax base is declining and our, and our levies going up, then it looks like our, the average taxes for the residential homeowner is going up 2.4%, $71 to $3,077. That's just the municipal portion of the, of your tax bill. And I just wanted to flag something because it confused the heck out of me. I know Mr. Gross has really sped up the process, but one of the numbers on this, on, one of the columns on sheet 3B actually has us in 2016. Now, I know you're good, but I don't think you can project out into what our numbers are going to be on 2016.
Where was that, Mr. Councilman?
It's, it's the, it's the page where all the tax information, it's 3B underscore III. Sorry about that.
All right, I'll check a look.
And I thought this was a form that we got from the state, so I just wonder if the state may have made that. But it compares 2015 to 2016.
It's obviously a typo.
I'm just mentioning it now because if people go to the budget and see it, they won't be confused by, by that because I think it's just the typo.
We'll repair that.
Okay.
Click.
Thank you. So, that's, that's all I wanted to say. And I'm more than happy to hear anything else from the administration if they want to talk about the budget or my colleagues, but I just wanted to flag that.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 105-15?
Some moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirilla?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on second and final reading. Ordinance 2445-15, and ordinance amending an ordinance creating a reclassification in salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees setting forth their titles, classification from salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee status as a township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Assistant Supervisor slash Public Works slash Certified Pool Operator, Assistant Supervising Mechanic, Record Support Tech One, Senior Public Works Repair slash Parking Meter Collector. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirilla?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, to introduce?
Yes, Council President Garino.
Garino. Yes. Is there any member of the public wishing to be heard on ordinance 2445-15? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open comment to my colleagues, Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, well.
Ladies first.
Thank you. During our budget hearings recently, we eliminated this title of Assistant Supervisor in Public Works, and here it looks like we are reintroducing the title of Assistant Supervisor in Public Works. And on the same ordinance, there's that Parking Meter Collector where I'm still uncomfortable not having that a comprehensive position. So, that's, I, I don't know what the question is. This is not Jeopardy. Did you put it in the form of a question?
Assistant Supervising is strictly housecleaning. Until such time as the budget is adopted and those positions are eliminated, we still have a position that we have to fund and we have an employee that needs to be paid properly in accordance with that. That will, you're absolutely right, after the adoption of the budget and those changes that occur, this position will go away. But until then, we need, we need that in place.
That was actually a mistake on our part. You've approved that in the 2014 budget, actually, and it was a raise that was supposed to be carried over a two-year period.
Right.
And when we did the ordinance, we left that title out. So, that's why that title's in here right now. That was our mistake. It's, there's no change in anything. That was approved in actually 2014 budget.
But then the title will be eliminated.
But in 2015, 2015. So, that employee's service is serving in that position now and needs to be paid appropriately now. But then, when we eliminate the positions, it'll retro, it will go away. That's why it's truly housecleaning.
If you recall, a couple weeks ago, we reintroduced an ordinance because in the 2014 budget, we had approved these raises over two years. And when we approved the ordinance, we only approved them for one year. So, when we did the, the new ordinance, that title was left out. That's the only reason it's in here now.
In the second year.
It's a housecleaning issue, actually.
Okay, and is there a way to, what's the word, bifurcate this ordinance that, if I don't want to vote on this Parking Meter Collector, is there a way to separate them out?
Uh, what do you mean separate them out?
The ordinance stands by itself. Yeah, the ordinance has to be adopted or, has to be adopted or turned down in its entirety.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Kukovia?
No, I, I didn't have any questions. I was, we can move to a vote. I'm not.
No, that's fine. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 2445-15 on second and final reading?
Some moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirilla?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
I voted against this in the budget process last year, so I'm voting against it now.
Council? Okay. Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
I'm going to have to vote no just because of the Parking Meter Collector, not for the other titles.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2446-15, an ordinance creating Chapter Two, Section 61 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange entitled pedestrian safety advisory board. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Before we take a vote, going through this ordinance and looking through all the parts of it that we were putting together, I, I sort of noticed that we left out a few points and a few people that we should include in our conversation and development of this ordinance, which is a very important ordinance that we have to look at. And, and we need to, I think, I would like to make a motion to table this ordinance into further investigation. I mean, to look deeply into it, to involve more people in the discussion and the development.
I second that, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Well, wait, I have to take a vote on the table.
Just to be clear, I mean, this is the ordinance 2446 that was kept on the last meeting, which had changes in it that are now in 2448.
Sorry, sorry.
So, I think the clean way to resolve this is to, is to vote down 2446, get rid of it, start over with 2448. Whether you do that tonight or some future night, it's a matter.
I'm sorry. I, I.
So, we're looking to vote it down?
Yes.
Because I, I'm making recommend.
You have to make the motion. First, you have to vote on a motion to introduce on second and final.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce on second and final reading.
Okay, okay. Councilman Cirilla?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
I'm voting.
This is to introduce on second and final. This is not the final.
Oh, to introduce, yes.
But if we want it voted down, now's the time to vote it down.
No.
No, this is just to introduce.
But if we don't introduce it, we won't have to vote.
It's already been introduced.
It's already been introduced.
I thought that's what you said we were voting on.
Introduce on second and final. It was introduced on first. Now, it needs to be introduced on second and final, after a public hearing, and then you can vote it down, and then we can move on. It'll, it'll die after that.
Could I just ask for a clarification, Mr. Kizer? If we, if we as a body vote not to introduce it on second reading, it's dead, correct? We don't have to go through the process of a public hearing and a second vote up or down on?
I suppose that's true. To me, the cleanest way to do it is just to vote against this particular ordinance, and then it's off the books altogether. And, but you're probably right that if you vote, if you don't vote to introduce it on second and final reading, in fact, it dies anyway, I guess. I mean, I haven't thought it through. I, I think under Robert's rules, that would be an accurate interpretation, but I just think the cleanest way to do it is just to vote it down.
Okay. So, who's next?
Okay, so.
This is to introduce. We motion to.
I'm voting no to introduce on second, correct?
Okay. Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's introduce on second and final.
Right. Now, I ask the general public, right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this ordinance on second and final reading? Seeing none, I close public comment. Oh, you didn't give me a chance. It's okay. Councilwoman McCartney?
I am going to vote this down because of conversation we've had with the Police Department. We do have a Traffic Bureau that I think should weigh in on this. We've had a couple of incidents this week. I would like to see a chain of command, or at least to let the public know what it is that they need to do if there's a situation. I know that the Traffic Bureau must already have the hotspots. They know what they are. I would like to see more involvement with the Police Department. And I do want to see this advisory board put together, but I want it to be more comprehensive, not necessarily special interest groups the way this is reading to me right now.
And that's why I felt that, when I relooked at it and rethought it through and spoke to members of the Gregory community, the schools, and I felt, you know what, it has to get. We need more traffic safety involvement, the Traffic Bureau, and that's why, like Councilwoman McCartney said, we'd like this to be a good ordinance, to be, you know, an ordinance as best as possible that will blend in with the entire community.
That's my word. That's my favorite word.
Any other comments?
If I could, just in case, I'm sorry. Typically, we don't allow comments on first reading. We're going to hear the more revised.
revised version of this on first reading, but I just wanted to throw out, and I don't know whether you've had a chance to take a look at it, but I had made a few suggestions to also modify it, I sent it to you and Ms. Moskowitz-Bilski. So, they really don't address this, but more reflect my experience with some of the other entities that I'm on here in, in West Orange, where we're having trouble getting quorums and getting anything done, because we can't get people to attend. So, I was just suggesting three things, mandate a minimum number of meetings per year for the actual group, and make sure that the minutes are publicly available, so that, that was one, because the ordinance as it stands doesn't require any number of meetings.
We took it out.
They took it out, it was in the last one.
It was in the last one, the original.
For any number of meetings.
Yeah, they, they had meet once a month, and now the new one doesn't have that.
Doesn't have that, we took it out.
Okay, so, I, I thought that that was a good idea. And then, I also suggested that the ordinance mandate an annual written report reviewing the calendar year's activities and reviewing expectations for the coming year, and it can be sent to the mayor and the council, so we have a mechanism to make sure that we as the council and the administration know what the heck these folks are doing. And then, the third thing is more in the participation, that we should set a minimum attendance standard, such that if a representative misses three meetings in a calendar year, the board by majority vote can require a new representative, or, or something like that. I just, I think a mechanism to make sure that people will attend, and if they won't, then we'll get somebody else fairly quickly, is, is something that we should have for all of our, all of our boards and committees. Anyway, I threw that out.
No, thank you, and that's why we took these into consideration, but you know, these are volunteer boards, and the thing is, we have to make it so, we want people to come, and, because you don't want people to not come and get tired of it, and, like some of our boards have, we have boards that, to your point, they have regulations and all that, and people don't come. So, thank you, thank you for your-
So, we need to enforce them, because the people that do come get really frustrated at wasting our time, if we come to the meeting and we can't get anything done-
Well, take it, Councilman, well, take it, thank you. Make a motion to approve 2446-15.
Second.
Councilman Cirilla?
No.
Councilman Kukovia?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
No.
Council President Garino?
No.
Okay.
This is the 101-1.
Ordinances on first reading, 2447-15, calendar year 2015, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Motion moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirilla?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
And-
This is, this is the one I want.
Yes.
Okay.
Ordinance 2448-15, and ordinance creating Chapter 2, Section 61 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange entitled Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. Do you want me to-
Madam Clerk, I'd like, if it's required, yes, if not required.
No.
Madam Clerk, this, at this point, this is, and I apologize to my colleagues and to the residents, this is the ordinance that I would like to table, that needs to go back, and we need to do more due diligence on it, and more research, and get more people involved in this. So, I'd like to table this ordinance, this time.
Second.
Second.
Just don't introduce.
Don't introduce. Don't introduce, okay.
Oh, okay.
But if it's on the agenda, don't we have to have at least a vote to introduce? And just, we can vote it down?
Just turn the page.
Procedurally, yeah, that's probably-
Right, right.
I mean, my understanding, ultimately, this ordinance, either as an ordinance, or perhaps as a resolution, because this committee could be, could be implemented as, by resolution, not formally creating this public body. The language needs to be worked on, my understanding that Mr. Abbott wants to talk about it, so it makes sense just to put this aside for now, and-
Okay, good point. Right, don't even introduce, so. Just turn the page.
Don't turn the page.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait, no, go through, Madam Clerk, go through.
Oh, all right, I'm going to need a motion, I need a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
No, did I get a motion?
Yes.[1725.25]